Senator Wellington committed a whole meeting for November the twenty second. Good to see everybody. It's one o'clock now and I'll call this meeting to order and we'll start with a roll call. Counselor Foster. Counselor Van Loon.
Present.
Counselor McQuain. I don't see him. He did mention that he was having some internet work done, so he might be a little bit late. So we'll keep an eye out for him in the waiting room. Counselor Kittriss.
Present.
Counselor Dunsmore.
Here.
Counselor McCray.
Here.
Okay, everybody's mics are working and we, I can see everybody. Any disclosure, no addendums or corrections to the agenda? Um, any disclosure of pecuniary interest on the municipal conflict of interest act with anything that we have here? Counselor Foster.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. No, not a, not a conflict of interest, but I, in terms of the agenda, the item nine one, I, I wondered if we, it should be before item eight one, since they tie together and whether or not we'd have any discussion or report from staff on item nine one in advance of eight one. It would make sense to me that we would have nine one before eight one, even though I realize it's an information item.
Okay, I'm gonna, we can, we can talk a little bit about that. I think we have to look at one before the other, but I just wanna, we have a new item on our agenda that we never had before, and I wouldn't mind the clerk explaining what addendums and corrections to the agenda is, because I think that is just staff's opportunity to bring into our attention any addendums or corrections. Can you confirm what that item on the agenda means, Carrie?
Yes, uh, your worship, the um, through the procedural bylaw process, we realized that there's no longer a need to confirm the agenda. However, you do need to have an item on there that allows you to bring forward addendums in the event and something comes forward after publication of the, of the agenda. So that is where anyone would raise, council would accept any addendums that are brought forward by staff and any corrections to the, to the agenda would be done at that time.
Okay, so just to confirm, that's not a place for us to identify where we can change the agenda at this point, right?
Through you, if there was an error, we would, it would have been brought forward to staff and staff would have then brought it forward to, to council's attention today. However, in, in, if, if you're, if you're wondering in response to Counselor Foster's inquiry, you must reconsider the item prior to considering the item. So that's why it is listed on the agenda, the way, the way in which it is, if that helps explain that.
Okay, any other questions with Counselor Foster's question there? Counselor Kittriss, I said, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, there's a conflict for number eight one, uh, so I'm not gonna be voting on that.
Okay, thank you. Carrie?
Uh, through, uh, you, if there, if there is a conflict of interest, you must explain the general nature thereof and it must be in writing. So the clerk's department will send you a form and you will need to complete that, uh, Counselor Kittriss. Thank you. But we, we, we need the general nature thereof of the conflict.
Do you need that right now?
Yes, declare it publicly.
They decide the bridge, so I'm not voting on that bridge. That's what I, I filled out the form last time, um, and I declared conflict, uh, and so.
So I think, yeah, I think the process is it has to be done every time it comes before council. So we'll make sure the clerks send you the right form and you can send it back, but you have declared the reason behind your conflict, so that's good. Uh, Counselor McQuain, welcome to the meeting. Just wanted to make sure that you had no disclosure of pecuniary interest with anything on the agenda today.
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so section four, we have approval and adoption of minutes. Uh, we have three sets of minutes there and I have a recommendation that the minutes of the ad hoc committee procedure by law meetings held May nineteenth, May twenty six, twenty twenty one, and the committee of the whole meeting held October eighteenth, twenty twenty one be adopted as circulated. Do I have a mover for that, please? Counselor Dunsmore, second and bye. Counselor McCray, any discussion of those minutes? All in favor? Opposed? And that's Carrie. So the first item on our agenda today, we have presentations and announcements, and we have the County of Wellington here with us today as our guest to talk about the municipal comprehensive review. Um, and I know that in addition to Sarah Wilhelm, we have our consultant Aldo, we have our consultants here as well. So welcome, Sarah, welcome Aldo. I'll let you guys start. Thanks for taking the time to be with us today and kind of explain the county's process. So I'll leave it to you. You guys can tag team as you see fit, um, and we'll turn it over to you. Welcome.
Welcome and uh, uh, thank you, Mayor Litten, and good afternoon. I think I'll just start by some introductory comments. Uh, we've fully engaged in the municipal comprehensive review and official plan update for over a year now, and um, we staff have been meeting with the member municipalities in terms of the uh, senior staff, but we haven't really, um, haven't really approached council directly. I know Sarah's been before your Health and Growth Committee, and so this is an opportunity to present this particular uh, proposal in more detail to you specifically, and we're pleased to be here, and I'm gonna just pass it over to Sarah. I think she's got some introductory comments, and I know there's a presentation as well.
Great. Thank you, Aldo. Um, I, I think Brad is going to share his screen with the presentation, so I'll let the technology catch up. Um, and for those of you who, who I haven't met, um, and you might not know me, I'm the manager of policy planning here at the county.
Sarah, can you see the screen?
I do.
Oh, the presentation, okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'll jump in. Um, just to, to start out, I, I wanted to give a quick overview, um, so moving to the, the next slide. Quick overview on what we're doing and then into, um, the, the first slide of the presentation, so that, as Aldo said, we're in the midst of the official plan review. It includes the, the two components, the municipal comprehensive review and the five-year review. Um, these are mandatory updates to make sure that our official plan policies are, stay current with provincial plans and policy changes, but we wanted to include the graphic, uh, right, which shows the focus areas. So just to illustrate that there are a number of overlapping and interconnected focus areas for the review, and, and they're all important. But um, as the next slide shows, we'll mainly be dealing with a high-level discussion of growth management today. Uh, more specifically, the county and township growth forecasts and allocations, which largely falls under the municipal comprehensive review. And uh, we wanted to also start with a bit of a, a discussion about the role of the province. That's on the next slide. And essentially, um, this is a top-down approach. And in the Greater Golden Horseshoe in particular, the, as the province assigns the number of people and jobs to all the, uh, the upper and single tiers in, in the growth plan area, including Wellington. And the province also sets the policy parameters for how we deal with growth and ultimately have the final approve of approval authority on the amendments that we, we will be dealing with to implement the technical work. Um, so then on to our work plan. We're, as I've said, we're here to talk about the forecasts and allocations, and, and that's part of Watson's Phase One work that has been underway. Um, little bit of background, we, we have established a, a technical committee to review the work. And this committee includes all municipal C A Os, municipal planning staff and consultants, county staff, and, and of course Watson and Associates. This summer, we hosted a public information center on the draft, uh, growth allocations and, and the urban structure. The um, Phase One report was a detailed technical report prepared by Watson and Associates, and, and that was also out for comment in the summer, and that, that comment period closed, um, in July. And in, I guess in tandem with that, we have, we have launched one of the official plan amendments that will implement a portion of that work, uh, meaning the, the growth structure. And so, um, we've, we've basically written the policies and map, mapping and draft. We have council of authorization to proceed with that, and the draft official plan amendment is out for comment. The comment period ends in mid-December, and we'll be looking to target, uh, public open houses and a public meeting in, uh, early twenty twenty-two. And then moving on to, um, at the same time that we're doing this Phase One work, there's also a Phase Two component, which is the land needs assessment. That's on the next slide. And again, we're, we're working through that, um, technical committee. And uh, we, we have a public information center scheduled for December thirteenth at six thirty, and that will be the first chance to, uh, release this information to the public. And then following that in, early in the new year, Watson will be releasing the detailed technical report that, uh, deals with the land needs assessment and, and other parts of that work. And then looking ahead to Phase Three, that's when we'll be looking at the need for settlement area boundary expansion. And that work plan and schedule is still in development. And uh, now I'm going to turn it over to Jamie, and he'll, um, he'll tell you a lot more.
Great, thanks, Sarah, and good afternoon, everybody. Apologies, I'm having some troubles with my, my video, so I'm going to leave that off today. So unfortunately, you won't be able to see me, but hopefully you can hear me okay. Can everybody hear me? Great. So again, good afternoon, Mayor Linton, members of council and staff. Uh, it's a pleasure to be able to speak to you today, to provide you a, an overview, uh, and summary of the, uh, work we've done to date on the, um, official plan review and specifically the, the land needs assessment component of that, of that work. Um, just wanted to start off the bit of a broad overview. Sarah already touched on, uh, some of this at a high level. I'm gonna just sort of recap on, on a little bit of the, the policy context. So on the next slide, this slide really just identifies the key three policy documents that we're dealing with. And now there are others, like the, the Green Belt Plan, for example. But these are the, the three primary documents that we're dealing with, and just to, you know, emphasize that, um, we are working within this policy framework. Um, it is, um, you know, it's a relatively prescriptive policy framework. Uh, it has, um, been updated, uh, in recent years by the current government. The first key policy document is the provincial policy statement. This was updated last May in two thousand and twenty, and it really, uh, provides the broad direction on matters of provincial interest related to land use planning. The second document is the, the growth plan, A Place to Grow, and it was updated in, uh, two thousand and nineteen and then amended in two thousand and twenty, and what that amendment did was extend the forecast forward, uh, another ten years to two thousand and fifty-one. And in Schedule Three of that plan, uh, it sets out the growth allocations for all of the upper tier and single municipalities within the Greater Golden Horseshoe. And um, as Sarah mentioned, those projections that are set out in Schedule Three are prescribed minimums that must be followed. Um, there are, um, options to go higher, but, um, the forecast by two thousand and fifty-one must be achieved as a minimum, and the plan must set out the, uh, approach to achieve that forecast. In conjunction with the growth plan, there's also the revisions, uh, or a revised landings assessment methodology that was also uh, updated in, uh, August of two thousand and twenty. It was, uh, intended to be a, a more outcome-based methodology, a less prescriptive relative to the previous methodology. I would say that through the practical application of this methodology, it still is fairly prescriptive. There's quite a few steps overall. There's six steps that have to be followed broadly for, um, residential or what we call community areas and four key steps for employment areas where we have industrial-type jobs, which I'll speak to. Um, so that is the, the overall overarching framework that we are required to, to work within. And, um, we have to ensure that we are meeting the ultimate, uh, or our ultimate, um, L and A results meet the framework that's set out in this. Um, broad provincial methodology, and we follow the, the L and A, uh, methodology. Uh, next slide, Brad. So just to jump into the, the Wellington County forecast, I'm sure many of you have uh, seen these, these numbers in Schedule Three of the growth plan. This is the two thousand and fifty-one forecast for Wellington County. And I'm gonna start with a few slides in the county, then we'll get into the Center Wellington allocations. So as of two thousand and fifty-one, the population forecast is a hundred and sixty thousand. The employment forecast is seventy thousand, and that represents an increase of about just over sixty-six thousand people and about twenty-two thousand five hundred jobs. As of two thousand and sixteen, as I mentioned, these are prescribed minimums. Um, you're, we're not required to hit specific targets or, or minimums uh, in intervals between now and two thousand and fifty-one, so we can essentially set whatever target we feel is appropriate in terms of how we get to fifty-one, but the fifty-one number ultimately has to be, uh, um, targeted in the overall, uh, official plan, uh, at that, over that long-term horizon. Uh, next slide. So there's a couple of other key policy targets, and there are many policy objectives and, 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 um, specific policies that we have to be, be looking at when we're conducting an L and A, but the three major ones I would point out are, uh, one, the intensification target, and so we'll speak to this in more details because of the presentation. But essentially, the, uh, the growth plan identifies the, the built-up area, uh, in each of the, uh, the twelve urban centers within, um, within the county, and within those urban centers in those built-up areas, the target in the current county official plan is twenty percent of all growth will be accommodated. So twenty percent of housing growth will be accommodated within the built-up area. Now, I would note that the county is requesting an alternative intensification target of fifteen percent, and that's based on our review of anticipated market demand for intensification as well as supply opportunities to accommodate housing development within the built-up area over the long term. So we have identified through that work that a lower target would be, uh, more appropriate. And we are working with the, uh, province to, um, set out that, uh, request for an alternative. The, um, existing official plan also identifies an overall density target of forty people and jobs per hectare in the designated greenfield area. So within the urban centers, outside of the built-up area, within the urban boundary is the remaining greenfield area, and that's the overall target that we're looking at here, that's prescribed in the current O P, and so the growth plan says that you're required to do, um, or, or achieve at least, um, this level or greater when you're looking at long-term, uh, density targets in the D G A. And then lastly, the, uh, other target that I want to point out is the employment area target. So employment areas are essentially all the other areas that are, um, outside of community area within urban settlement areas. And these are areas that are essentially designated to accommodate industrial-type development. And so, back in two thousand and seventeen, the, the province de-linked this target. It used to be an average of employment and community area combined. They de-linked that target. Given the challenges that we have in, in achieving higher densities in employment areas and, and the, um, the limit we have to influence those densities over the long term. Um, so they, um, the province has established that, uh, municipalities set out their own employment density targets based on, um, a review of existing conditions and anticipated trends over the long term. Next slide. So on the, uh, the following slide, I just, I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the overall regional trends, um, and growth drivers. And, uh, on this next slide here, um, just wanted to start off by, uh, identifying the overall methodology for projecting population and employment growth. And so while the province has provided an overall population and employment target to two thousand and fifty-one, and there's further background that's been prepared through a background technical document, it really doesn't provide all the details in terms of what we think, uh, is, you know, um, the, the ultimate numbers for, uh, population by, by age, uh, housing by type, and employment by sector for the county. And so we take the, uh, existing information and, um, we've examined that and assessed it to determine first, is this an appropriate minimum? And, uh, what are the specifics about the forecasts that ultimately we're going to be then working with, um, when we then, um, get into allocating the growth by, by area municipality? And so when we're compiling this first stage of the work, and this is the first component of the L and A, we, uh, we look at the overall broader economic, uh, conditions within the, the macroeconomic, uh, environment and the regional environment. And it's important to note that, um, there's a strong interconnectivity between what's happening in the broader Greater Golden Horseshoe and even beyond in the province of Ontario with respect to, uh, the economic outlook for, for growth and, and, and labor. And then ultimately, what does that mean in terms of, uh, employment potential? Um, and then we're looking specifically at Wellington County and Center Wellington. What are the, what is the employment potential um, for commuting from, um, the, the county and, and the municipality? And what are the local regional opportunities for, for job growth over the long term? And then ultimately, that, uh, assessment of job potentials, a primary driver of net migration. Net migration is the, the key, the key driver of population growth within the county. Uh, because the population's aging, population growth from natural increase, which is essentially birth less death, uh, is minimum, minimal, and then ultimately, um, will become negative over the long term. So we're more and more reliant on net migration, which is ultimately tied to that, largely that economic potential. We also look at the attractiveness of the county and, in this case, Center Wellington, uh, with respect to its ability to accommodate, um, those who aren't in the labor force as well. So I'm specifically speaking to largely the seniors population and how attractive it is for, uh, retirement, uh, living as well. So that's also a key factor. We then look at the population age structure, and that age structure then provides insights into the, uh, need for housing, uh, overall, and that relations between population growth and housing needs. And then ultimately, we look at the population, uh, sorry, the housing by structure type. So low-density housing, medium-density housing, like townhomes, high-density housing, um, being apartments. From there, we then get into an allocation of the growth by, um, uh, by area municipality, and then is, is then, um, by settlement area. And then, uh, from there, we break that down by policy area between the built-up area and the, uh, the D G A and remaining rural area. That's essentially the first phase of the work that we're in now, and then from there, that will set the stage to looking at the longer-term urban land requirements for the county, each of the municipalities. Next slide. So again, just wanted to focus on the, um, that broader regional context, and if you've read through the, the Phase One report, you'll see there's quite a bit of discussion that's provided in the, the Phase One report about this regional context. And some of the things that, uh, we really stress in our report is just again, that the, the future economic potential of Wellington County and ultimately Center Wellington is highly tied to the broader economic competitiveness of this, this city region that we call the Greater Golden Horseshoe. And so when we look at the, 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 the overall trends hap, that are happening with population growth and economic growth in the Greater Golden Horseshoe, we see that this area is a very fast-growing large city region. It's expected to grow from a population of about nine point five million in two thousand and sixteen to fourteen point nine million in two thousand and fifty-one. So that's an increase of about a hundred and fifty thousand or a hundred and fifty-five thousand people every year. So it's, it's like adding the city of wealth to the overall G G H, um, every year on a year-by-year basis. So we're living in a, you know, a rapidly growing large city region. The, uh, the employment base is also growing at a, at a rapid rate comparable to the population with an overall increase of about seventy thousand jobs annually. And when we look at what's been happening over the, the last, um, several decades, uh, and what, what's continuing to happen is we, we continue to see outward growth pressure from the core areas of the G G H and that Greater Toronto Area and Hamilton area in green on the map to the outer ring areas. You can see on the left, uh, there's a, a bar chart that shows the, the relative population of the, um, the, the G G H, uh, in between the G T H A and the G G H outer ring in two thousand and one and in two thousand and sixteen, uh, two fifty, sorry, the historical growth from oh-one to sixteen, and then forecast growth from sixteen to fifty-one. And what you can see is that over time, the G G H, um, is, uh, expected to account for a greater share of population within the overall Greater Golden Horseshoe. And so despite efforts to contain growth within the G T H A, and there's been success in doing that, there's also, as I mentioned, six, significant outward growth pressure from the G T H A to the outer ring. That pressure is really a result of two things. It's, uh, it, one, um, relative affordability of housing within the G T H A and the outer ring, and the ability to find competitively priced, ground-oriented, um, housing opportunities within the G T H A. And as housing prices continue to rise, you see further outward growth pressure from the larger urban centers of the G T H A into the outer ring and beyond. But what's also happening is the, the economy's been recovering in the outer ring area and the G T H A. Fairly steadily since around two thousand and fifteen. We had a very deep, um, um, economic downturn in two thousand and eight-nine as a result of the global financial crisis, and since that time, we've seen rebounds in most sectors of the economy. And, uh, we've seen a, a gradual recovery of the export-based economy and the, um, service sector economy, both in the G T H A but also in the outer ring. And now with the further pressures of COVID, we're seeing more outward growth pressure since two thousand and, uh, March two thousand and twenty to the, uh, to the outer ring, largely as a result of more uh, pressure for work-at-home opportunities and distributed work, uh, but as well, um, the continued recovery of that, uh, regional economy is also providing more local opportunities within this area. Now, there has been obviously significant disruption from COVID, and we have, we have seen, um, we did see, uh, job losses in, in two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, and I won't get into all the details of that, but, um, I just did want to provide a bit of a broader sort of overview of what's causing this, uh, trend. And the point of this is that it's not just COVID that's impacting this pressure that we're experiencing right now. It's something that has been, that's been going on for, um, the better part of about seven years or so, but it's been accelerated. Next slide. So this provides, uh, just a summary of how does Wellington County compare in terms of overall population growth relative to, to the other outer ring municipalities? And you can see, uh, it's number third in terms of the, um, fastest-growing municipalities in the outer ring. So most of that outward growth pressure are, are, I, I would say, a, um, a more, um, concentrated, uh, sort of effect is being uh, felt within the west areas of the G, uh, G G H and the northern areas of the G G H. And you can see Berry and Simcoe in Wellington, Waterloo, all coming in close to the top of that range, uh, whereas areas in the eastern area of the G G H and, uh, into the south, um, show slightly lower, uh, rates of, uh, population growth. Next slide. So in terms of where we're at with the two thousand and fifty-one forecast for the county, we have examined this forecast in detail. We've confirmed that the minimum forecast is appropriate. We're not, uh, recommending higher population for Wellington County by two thousand and fifty-one. We're also not, um, recommending changes to the current, uh, official plan, uh, amendment ninety-nine numbers for two thousand and thirty-one. We're proj, we're, uh, recommending a slight increase in the two thousand and forty-one numbers. So it's the current forecast, O P ninety-nine for forty-one is a hundred and forty thousand. We're recommending another two thousand people by two thousand and forty-one, uh, largely to account for additional growth in here and at that time. And then by two thousand and fifty-one, we're at the minimum requirement of a hundred and sixty thousand. So on the next slide, this shows what this translates into in terms of housing requirements. Um, this graph doesn't give you a, maybe a, a full picture of these, the relative change to historical trends. You can see from two thousand and sixteen to twenty twenty-one, over that five-year period, we were, uh, over that five years, we averaged about, uh, or totaled about just on under twenty-eight hundred units in the county overall. Just to provide a bit more context, if you go a little further back from two thousand and one to twenty-one, the county was averaging about just under four hundred and twenty housing units a year. And, uh, over the forecast, we're projecting an annual average of about seven hundred and, uh, thirty. So it's an increase, a large increase of about seventy-five additionally, seventy-five percent increase in, in annual housing units, uh, every year uh, in, in, uh, Wellington County as a whole. You can see the, uh, projection is that, um, the rate of growth will be strongest, uh, in terms of rates and absolute levels in the, the first, uh, ten years of the forecast. It doesn't, does, uh, eventually start to moderate over the long term. And that moderation is largely as a result of the aging of the population and the labor force over the long term and the downward impact that has on, on economic growth and, and also housing needs over the long-term period. The other thing I wanted to point out was that you can see that the population, sorry, the the housing mix is shifting over time just to a a higher percentage of medium and high-density housing overall over the long-term period. And that's again largely a result of housing affordability, which obviously Wellington County is not immune to either. We're seeing rapid appreciation, housing prices in the county and also in Senator Wellington, which puts more pressure on a broader requirement for a broader range of housing types by all ages and incomes. So combined with housing appreciation and an aging population, we see a need for a greater mix of housing over the long term. So we're going to now move into the allocations piece, which is the main piece that we really want to talk to you about today. And if we go to the first slide, this is the overall, sorry, this before we get into the the slide on the population, I just wanted to point out that when we're looking at the population forecast and ultimately when we get into the land needs, our primary focus in the LNA is the urban centers within the county. And so this is just a map to summarizing what those those 12 urban centers are. Obviously, within Senator Wellington, our focus is on Alora Salem and Fergus. We are also looking at the population and employment growth in the rural area, as well as looking at ultimately policy recommendations that for both urban and rural lands. But the LNA itself, that land needs assessment document is specifically designed to provide the methodological background to looking at urban land requirements in these urban centers. So that is going to be a key focus of the the work going forward in in Phase Two when we look at the land needs. So on the next slide, this provides a summary of the Senator Wellington allocations. So really, what I wanted to point out was we're building on the existing work that's been provided in OP 99. We're not essentially reinventing the wheel per se in terms of the overall population and housing growth within Senator Wellington over that 51, 41, I should say, horizon. So as of 2041, we are still targeting the same population for Senator Wellington that's in the Wellington County OP 99 of 52,300. And by 2051, we're projecting an additional just under 6,000 additional people from that 41 to 51 period. You can see that the the population that we're projecting is just here to be quite strong during the 21 to 31 period. It then starts to, or sorry, remains strong over that 31 to 41 period, but it does start to slow in the post-41 period. And again, that's really a result of a couple of things. One is the overall population is aging as as is the labor force, as I mentioned. But we're also seeing more opportunities in the other municipalities of the county over that longer-term period, including largely Aaron in the south, but also a greater emphasis on population being directed to the northern municipalities over the longer-term period as well. And so this is a key theme that I want to point out to to the council today in terms of the overall trends for Senator Wellington. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see generally what that translates into in terms of the share of this Wellington, Senator Wellington's population growth to Wellington County as a whole. And so historically, from 2001 to 21, the the county's population is representative, sorry, the Senator Wellington population to the county has been about 61% of the overall population growth. So a significant amount of population being allocated or being accommodated within Senator Wellington relative to the county. Over the next 20 years, we anticipate that that share will stay strong, but will decrease to about 44% again, as other areas take on a larger role for accommodating population. And that trend is expected to continue to the over the 41 to 51 period where we see Senator Wellington's share of population declining to about 32%. On the next slide, this translates that share of growth into annual average housing growth over the the forecast period relative to historical trends. And so for Senator Wellington, the average historical rate of housing development's been just over 200 units a year based on actual census data and anticipated development that we're experiencing through residential building permits for for new development over the 2016 to 21 period. Over the 21 to 41 period, we anticipate that growth rate for housing to increase quite substantially to about 330 average units a year and then drop down to about 190 units per year over the 41 to 51 period again, corresponding with that lower rate of population growth that that I mentioned. I also wanted to point out, if you look at the the overall colors here on the on the the graph, which is showing housing structure type, like just similar to the the countywide forecast, we're also anticipating a shift towards a broader range of housing types to include more medium and high-density housing forms. Again, as Senator Wellington's population ages and as housing prices become less affordable over time, we anticipate a greater need of housing by structure type as well as by tenure. So there'd be more need for other forms of rental housing to accommodate both typically both older and younger segments of the population that may not be in the ownership market. Next slide. So this is similarly to the the population. This is the summary of Senator Wellington's employment forecast. This looks at the forecast at five-year increments from 2021, 2051. Again, we're we're not proposing any changes to the OP 99, 2041 employment forecast for Senator Wellington. And during that 41 to 51 period, we're projecting an increase of just under 4,000 additional jobs. In terms of the overall type of jobs, we we would expect a steady amount of jobs within what we would call population-related employment categories. So this is jobs related to commercial, retail, institutional, as well as work at home. We would expect to see a steady increase in the absolute amount and share of jobs in the work-at-home category, largely as a result of the strong population growth that we're anticipating within Senator Wellington. We'd also, we also expect to see further growth in export-based sectors, largely in small to mid-scale manufacturing, agribusiness-type operations, some transportation wholesale trade and construction-type jobs as well. And the other areas I would point out is just the opportunities in what we would call the creative class economy as well as knowledge-based sectors. These are all areas that we expect to see growth as well as some opportunities within the the primary sector. So agriculture or agriculture-related activities outside of urban urban centers. The 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 line graph or it's right, the the line on the top of the the chart here is measuring the employment activity rate. So that employment activity rate is a measure of the ratio of employment to jobs. And so in 2021, that overall activity rate was 36%. So just over just over a third of in total number of jobs relative to the total population. That activity rate is anticipated to grow quite steadily from 36% to 43% over the long-term forecast period. It is quite a healthy long-term forecast activity rate. Again, largely based on the opportunities for local population-serving and export-based related jobs over the long term as the the local economy continues to grow and mature and diversify over the long-term period. So moving forward into the the land needs component, we have, we have spoken with the technical resource team on a number of occasions about the preliminary findings of the urban land requirements and which will form Phase Two of our analysis. And wanted to provide you a bit of an overview with respect to Senator Wellington's needs. So if you go to the first slide, again, just wanted to provide a little bit of background in terms of the the overall definitions and terminology that's used in the growth plan and the LNA methodology between community area and employment area. So this is in a, this is an example of the community area and employment area within Alora Salem. So all the areas that are identified in in Yella, which is essentially where people live and where we also accommodate retail and mixed-use type developments as well as institutional development. These are all the areas that are identified as community area. And then the areas in blue are the areas that are designated as employment area. So these are areas where we anticipate to accommodate or already are accommodating industrial-type development. And so the focus of our work is to look at urban land needs within the each of the urban settlement areas of the county, looking at community area and employment area needs. And on the next slide, when we break that down a little bit further, when we look at the the community areas and the employment areas within the when we're looking at the community area, we're looking at both the development potential within the already built-up areas, which are the areas that are identified in the dark purple. And that's where we have a minimum intensification target that's been identified for Wellington County of currently at 20%. We're recommending a target of 15%. For Senator Wellington, we're recommending a target of 20% for for Senator Wellington. The areas that are in the light purple are the areas that are identified as designated greenfield area. So again, these are all areas that are designated for urban development. Some of these areas are not specifically designated yet for community area land, and some of them are identified for future development, but they are contained within the urban settlement area. And so a a large objective or a key objective of our work is to identify if each of the settlement areas have sufficient land to accommodate our forecast demand for growth or if urban settlement boundary expansions are required over the the 2021 to 51 period. Next slide. So there's quite a few calculations that are involved with this process. And I'm going to just summarize it at a high level for Senator Wellington. And so when we look at Senator Wellington's needs for community area, so again, these are the areas where we're largely accommodating people as well as mixed-use development, like commercial, retail, institutional. We've identified just under 31,000 people and jobs in those greenfield areas that were identified in the light purple in the previous slide over the 2000 and or by 2051. And when we divide that number by the density that we're recommending for Senator Wellington of 44 people and jobs per hectare, which is a little higher than the county average because some areas in the the county are achieving a lower density to the density than 40, that gives us a demand of about 705 gross hectares. When we examine the supply of land within Senator Wellington, we see there's about 387 gross hectares of land that are identified. And then when we compare that to the demand of 705, that gives us a shortfall of about 316 gross hectares of land that would be required above and beyond what's already designated within the DGA area of both Alora, Alora Salem as well as Fergus. Now, I would note that right now, we have assumed that about 34 hectares of land within the South Fergus Secondary Plan are designated as employment area. If those area, if that land was not to be designated as employment area and was recommended to be designated as a community area, then that would reduce the overall need for community area by 34 hectares and bring that down to 282 hectares. So something we'll have to consider as we move forward. Next slide. So this provides a summary of the employment land needs. Again, I mentioned employment areas are the areas where we're accommodating industrial-type development. These are your industrial areas and and your commercial, industrial business parks. So overall, we've identified a supply of 82 gross hectares. Again, this includes 34 gross hectares within the South Fergus Secondary Plan. We've identified a need of 228 hectares to accommodate the forecast employment growth over the 2021 to 51 horizon. And that provides a shortfall of about 146 gross hectares of additional employment land that would be required beyond what's currently designated to accommodate that overall forecast. So just to summarize again, we're looking at about 316 gross hectares of community area and about 146 hectares of employment area. So that is the overall summary of the needs for Senator Wellington. That's also being reviewed. This analysis is being reviewed for all of the urban centers within Wellington County. We're also looking at needs locally between each of these areas. So some areas have a shortfall of of identified land like Senator Wellington. Other areas have an identified surplus, and that's being worked out through our LNA process. In some cases, we are identifying excess lands. So for example, Wellington North has more land than they need to accommodate growth. So we are identifying excess lands in in Wellington North, for example, to ensure that everybody, all the local needs that are being identified are being met within this plan to accommodate the 2051 forecast. Next slide. So just to to wrap up in terms of next steps, we are working through the final stages of the Phase Two process. We are planning a virtual public information center on December 13th, as Sarah mentioned. That's planned at 6:30 PM on the 13th. We will be providing an overview of the findings with respect to the land needs at the countywide level. We'll then be planning to release the Phase Two report in Q1 of 2022 and then finalizing that report shortly thereafter. We continue to be coordinating with the municipal municipalities. Our primary group is the Technical Resource Committee or TEAM, TRT, as we call it. We'll also be sharing information with respect to the findings of the and we already have been sharing findings with respect to the Phase Two work with the TRT group. And we'll be forwarding the county planning reports to municipal clerks and scheduling other meetings with municipal staff and committee and council in Q1 and Q2 of next year. This will then lead to a further phase of work, which will be our Phase Three work plan, which will get into the detailed recommendations for location options for urban expansion as well as key policy recommendations to the the county official plan as a result of the findings of the 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 MCR. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Great, thanks very much, Jamie, and also Aldo and Sarah for this presentation. I'm just going to, and thanks Brett for recognizing that it made sense for us to have the county speak directly to our 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 counselors today and give them the opportunity to ask questions. I think growth is something that's important to all of us to have an understanding on on what the environment is, what the context text is and what it means for Senator Wellington. Before I turn it over to questions from council, though, I'd like Brett, if you could just talk a little bit about and and just just briefly talk about what this means for for Senator Wellington. Because I know the county and the township work work pretty closely and our staff at the township work closely with county staff all the way through. So it's not the county doing this on their own, but you were part of the 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 technical group. So just if you could just mention a couple of things about how the township has been involved in this process, Brett, and then I'm going to turn it over to questions from council.
Sure, thank you, Mayor Lynton. Well, both both the CAO, Andy Goldie, and myself are part of the county's technical resource team. And there's been several meetings over since the project kicked off, as Sarah mentioned. And and the growth allocations have been refined throughout sort of to where we're at today. What the township's input has been on providing information about our land supply, ensuring that there's a consistent approach throughout the county on how the land supply is determined. When it comes to the growth forecasts and the growth allocations, the question that the township has been asking at the staff level throughout the process has been, what are the opportunities for additional growth to be allocated elsewhere in the county? It seemed like the the allocations to the township are through the through the 2041 and out to 2051 are a significantly higher amount of growth on an averaged annual basis than we've seen in the past. So our question have been oriented towards what are the opportunities for growth to be allocated elsewhere in the county? And each time that's resulted in the county coming back with with refinements and more consultation. In the county coming back with uh with refinements and more consultation with. Some of the other municipalities. So we reached a point where we felt it was uh best for. The consultants to come to council and explain how the process works, and in particular, how it's a top down uh. Process that's defined largely by by the provincial rules. But um, we still have some outstanding concerns about. The amount of growth. Um, I think it works out to about two percent annually for the township. And wondering whether other, there's not opportunity for growth to go to. Other places in the county, but I think we're sort of reaching the limit of how much adjustment can be done.
Thanks very much, Brett. And again, um, this is for council's information. So there's no decision being made by township council today, but I did want to make sure that all counselors had an opportunity to comment. Or ask our county staff uh any questions that they have. So I'm going to just go around the room um and ask us, ask counselors. Counselor Foster, you have anything?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. My question would be for Jamie and Brad uh from Watson and Associates, and maybe Brett as well. Uh, gentlemen, you're you're basically. Telling us here in Center Wellington that we have to turn into a city and that we have to double in size from. Just a short time ago, we were twenty seven thousand people. The target for twenty uh forty one is fifty two thousand. That's as good as a double in size. So I have two questions. One is um. Most citizens feel we're growing too fast already with the growth we've already accrued. What do we tell the citizen, most of whom don't want to see us turn into a city and double in size?
Yeah, so I'll um, as far as the questions go, um, Sarah, Aldo, do you want to take it or do you want me to pass it to Sarah initially, and then you guys can decide who answers it, or how do you want to do it? Who wants to be on the hot seat for these questions initially, anyway?
I don't mind start.
Go ahead, Jamie. I was just going to say, Mayor, that uh we'll probably toss between us, uh whoever best can answer the questions. Um. Some of the questions, we may not be able to respond immediately, but we'd be happy to come back uh and provide those details, but uh. I'll allow Jamie opportunity to speak.
Sounds good, Aldo. Jamie?
Yeah, thanks. Um, um, Counselor Foster, it's a, it's a good question. It's, it's obviously, it's a difficult question. It's not an easy one to answer. It's not an easy one to uh provide that uh to to residents who. Are not as uh necessarily um excited about the level of growth that we're looking at here. Um, I. I would, I would start by saying that um. Every municipality within Ontario, and in this case, Central Ontario, the Greater Golden Horseshoe has a role to play, you know, in accommodating growth. And so it really starts at the federal level. Um, most of our population growth really is dictated by our immigration targets, you know, when it comes to growth in our larger urban centers. And then from there, um, it really is a matter of um that outward growth pressure. From the larger urban centers to areas like Center Wellington that we ultimately um, which has received population growth typically through interprovincial migrant net migration. So. Most of your growth isn't coming from um directly from immigration. Some of it is, but it's mostly that outward growth pressure from um other areas in. Uh, the GTA. And so over time, um. You know, as we've identified, the Greater Golden Horseshoe is going to be a a large, fast-growing municipality, one of the fastest in in North America. And there are, there are good things and bad things associated with population growth. Uh, obviously, there's externalities. There's additional traffic. There's upward pressure on 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 prices. Um, there can be loss of agriculture land and um other externalities like like those. But it's also important to keep in mind, there's a fine line between not having enough growth and having too much growth. So you need to have. Um, a a constant um. Um, level of growth within your population, typically your younger age groups, to ensure that your labor force is continuing to grow and uh be sufficient to uh be able to um. Provide the labor to accommodate local job creation. Um, local uh population growth and employment also creates economic impacts. It provides uh tax assessment. Um, and so um. Having a um, a a steady amount of population growth is quite important to to achieve and maintain that vibrancy within your. Your settlement areas and as well as some of your secondary settlement areas as well. So there is a balance and it's 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 um. It's a, it's a bit of a fine line to achieve that optimal balance that we're that we're trying to uh to achieve. Uh, I think over the long term, we will, we will get there, but I I feel that in the short term, we are going to see uh continued outward pressure and and uh pent up demand. And um. That's, that's being accelerated at the moment, as I mentioned, through the impacts of COVID. But over the long term, we would see. Those trends coming back down to a more moderate level. A bit more comparable to what you were experiencing, say, from two thousand and one to two thousand and twenty one. So hopefully that provides a bit of a uh helpful response. Uh. May not quite cut it for you, but uh, um, that's what I can offer you at this point.
Well, just, and and thanks for that, Jamie. I know uh the pros and there's pros and cons to growth and and thanks for providing that. But I think a question on. A lot of counselors' minds right now is, um, so we have a top-down number that the province gives us for growth. What happens if we just, why can't we just say no? Um, and I think that's the answer that everybody wants to know, or citizens want to know. Um, and if you could just let us know a little bit about the process, um, because we are being required to grow, and what does that look like? And. And why can't we just say, no, it's too, the growth is too much, we're not going to do it?
Well, again, uh, Mr. Mayor, through you, I think it's um. You know, it really is part of a broader economic uh uh plan for for the province. Uh, this is essentially, the growth plan is essentially the province's official plan. If you will, and uh. I think we would all agree that um a steady amount of population growth is uh is an essential component of. Uh, of a competitive economic uh uh future for the province and for Central Ontario. And so. It's hard to imagine a scenario where we have a prosperous economic future with a a slow population growth. We have an aging population. Uh, and that we're not immune to that in Center Wellington or uh in the county. It's the primary reason why I believe the federal government has had a bullish stance on net um uh immigration over the last thirty years. We are going to see significant aging of the population. That puts downward pressure on population growth rates. It also puts downward pressure on labor force participation. So. The one thing to keep in mind is that it's a, it's a competitive environment. And so. These are overall uh population employment targets at the province's setting and then looking to allocate at the local level. This isn't a status quo scenario. Uh, the province, uh, and each of the area municipalities, um, or upper tiers and single tiers will have to. Uh, administer, you know, um, robust plans and strategic plans, economic development plans to ensure that they are attractive and accommodating. Uh, first broadly, we're accommodating net migration uh internationally, and that we're able to also attract. Uh, regionally within Center Well, sorry, within Wellington County within that GGH context. So um, it's not necessarily a. A a do nothing scenario either. And then I think that's. I think it really starts, though, with that economic uh objective, uh, and why growth is important.
Aldo?
Yeah, Marilyn, and I think, I think if I understand your question. What if Center Wellington Council and therefore County Council says to the province, uh, sorry, um. Thank you very much, but we don't want this level of growth. Ultimately, because it's a provincial process, the province will say. Thank you very much. We'll tell you what you're getting. And by the way, there's no appeal mechanism. Um, the, the province has the ultimate decision-making and. And I guess that's what we're faced with. If we decide that uh. Um, we'd rather have all the growth go to Simcoe or Waterloo and not to Wellington, then the government will say, sorry, everybody, let's play fair and get your share. So. Ultimately, they will have the final say. Um, and to what degree they make those decisions, I don't know. Uh. I think what we're doing, what what we're tasked to do is to set up. Uh, a process to to allocate, define where that growth will happen, and then to set up the policies in such a way that. We can achieve those complete communities and have a a a balanced level of growth, have maintained quality of life, all the other things that we do. And that what the policies do currently. Um. So I think ultimately, that's, I think that's your question, Mayor, is what happens if we all say it's too much? It it'll be the problems that makes a decision.
Thanks, Fred, although. Uh, follow up, Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two follow-up questions. And on that note, Aldo, thank you for your answer. Uh, very clearly, most of the citizens in Center Wellington feel we're growing too fast. What? What exactly might the province do if we told them we we wouldn't accept those growth targets? Will they? You know, what, what will they do? Are they going to throw us out of the province? Like. What exactly would be the outcome if we turned down these targets?
Well, at the end of the day, they are requiring us to file uh an amendment which demonstrates uh how we've achieved uh conformity with the growth plan. Um, so it'll be an instrument before County Council, uh, an amending document. It will eventually go to the province for approval. And they have the ability to modify the, the, the plan that's been presented to them. Um, and within that. Again, they can make whatever changes they feel necessary to make. Uh, and there is not an appeal. The county won't be able to appeal that decision, and neither will uh any citizens or any, any uh, any group.
Counselor Van Loon?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, to be completely honest, I I think my questions have been somewhat answered. I think, I believe that the. How you had summed it up with a question on everybody's mind is, what are we going to do with growth? And I think that this is the most difficult part of a community that. We want that small-town feel, but um growth is is somewhat inevitable. Do we uh manage our growth or do we endorse growth? And I think that at this point, we we just need to learn to manage that growth in a healthy way. I I don't know how else to go from there.
Counselor McQuain?
Thanks, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. Uh, first one has to do with uh. Our water. Um, our water supply master plan. Says that we are short of water right now, even the tier three. Uh, study says that we're only having. We only have guarantee of enough water until mid thirty, mid twenty thirties. Is this being taken into consideration in our growth numbers? Because uh with those kind of growth numbers. It's hard to say how, when we're going to run out of water. Uh, just curious whether, you know, how how high that is in the uh checklist of priorities when when doing this calculation.
Yeah, I think this is probably a call-in question. Colin, you thought you were going to get away with no questions today, but I think this is, this is on you.
That's okay. I get to test out my new headset here. So that's great. Everybody hear me okay? Great, great, excellent. Uh, thank, thanks for the question and and through Mary Linton uh to Counselor McQuain. So. Uh, so yeah, so the Water Supply Master Plan uh clearly identifies um the need for additional water supply capacity. Uh, to service, to service growth. Uh, we were using the twenty forty one uh planning horizon as part of that. Uh, we've heard about a twenty fifty one. Uh, planning projections as well. So as a growing community, um, you know, additional water supply capacity. Uh, is required, and even on the wastewater treatment side, um, we know not too far down the road. Uh, in the distant future, we've got a uh, an expansion for the Fergus wastewater treatment plant uh that will be required to uh to service growth in the community. So. Uh, so we're, we, we have capital projects um that are underway, that are approved by by council to uh to look at extracting additional capacity. Um, out of a couple of existing wells, F two and F five, those projects are are underway currently. And um, and then also council recently awarded um. Uh, consultant assignments uh for the new well exploration program, and that's to examine um the areas recommended. In the Water Supply Master Plan to secure additional water supply capacity. So uh certainly, you know, lots of work to be done uh to get uh. Additional capacity on lines, but uh the capital projects have been identified. Staff are are proceeding with uh with uh work, projects, initiatives to uh to secure that. Uh, additional capacity and and uh that all feeds back through our um annual calculations of our capacity relative to uh to growth. Uh, we look at those every year. So we're monitoring very carefully what capacity do we do have available and how that gets allocated to uh to growth.
Thanks, Colin. Follow on, Counselor McQuain?
Uh, no, this is a separate question. I'll, I I am. You know, still concerned that, do we really have enough water in the ground? But I guess that's going to be discovered over our. Over the, over time when we start doing some drilling. So I'll leave that question go. My other question is, um. It looks like we need another five hundred gross hectare almost. Just to handle growth and that sounds like farmland disappearing. And I expect for uh five hundred hectare of farmland, we're also going to lose. Or at least envelop. Uh, a significant number of hectares of wetlands. So. I mean, we're, we're, that's, that's a huge, I don't know what the size of Alora Fergus is right now in hectares. But it sounds to me like it's, it's, it's a huge growth outside of the existing boundaries. So how big does that make us?
Yeah, it's a great question, uh, Counselor McKeon. I don't know if um anyone on the team has an answer right now in terms of the overall size. Brad, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you have the. If you do have the existing hectares of the DGA uh handy, or you can maybe come back to. Uh, Mr. McKeon, that would, that would be, that would be helpful. Um, it is a a large area. I will, uh, I will agree, but uh we'll have to. Take a moment to see if we can get that stat for you.
Yeah, I don't have it right with me right now, but I'll look into it.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Brad. Thanks, Jamie. Counselor Kitchess?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a few questions. Uh, my first question is, I guess it's for Jamie, Aldo, and and Brett. Um. It's about transportation. Is transportation part of this uh OP? And I have a uh citizens group that is uh in my ward that is protesting uh the uh. And and wanting reconsideration of a a county uh plan on twenty nine to build a bridge over and put trucks. Um, through a residential area. And I'm wondering. In this, uh, i- is, is transportation part of this? And will you be reconsidering um? Um, some alternative like an actual ring road uh to accommodate uh. Uh, development to our um industrial area in the north. That's my first question.
So I think talking about the connection between the County Roads Master Plan. Uh, and this, and this study that we're talking about to here is what your question is, right, Counselor Kitchess?
That's right.
Okay. Aldo, you want to take a run at that, that connection between that roads master plan and the work that you're talking about today?
Yeah, so the, the, the work that county engineering is doing is preceding the work that will. That we're doing, and we hope to see the results of that, and eventually it'll make its way into policy for us. Uh, certainly, transportation is something we have to look at. Um. Specifics, though, with respect to uh. Uh, Counselor Kitchess's comment about a ring road, we, our work won't get into those details. Um. Uh, but the broader question of appropriate uh policies to address growth, transportation is is. It's clearly going to be addressed. It is currently. Our policies have transportation provisions. Uh, both at the, at the county level and at the local level. So that will continue. Um, jurisdictional issues or questions related to some of the roads, that's. That's a, a question that's not part of what we're looking at. And I'm sure it's something that is ongoing and and. Um, and something that the Rose Committee would would have to consider.
Councilor Ketchis, following.
Thank you, Mayor. It was stated about the area of expansion earlier in a question. And I'm wondering, there's an area where will the official plan, what, where, are they expanding farmland outside of our present resident, residential areas? And I'm wondering what about the area in between Ferguson and Alora? Is that not part of, of, of our urban centers? And is that part of the land that's being reconsidered?
Why don't I start, Marilyn? That's the next phase of work. And Jamie alluded to in his presentation, where what we're looking at today is the, is the allocation. And so it's the, it's the, it's the growth to the municipality. Where that growth will have to be accommodated, the, the reference to the the 316 and 146 hectares, that, that's the next phase. And perhaps Jamie can elaborate in terms of what that pro, how, how that process rolls out.
Thanks, thanks, Aldo, and through you, Mr. Linton, Mayor Linton. So in phase three, we'll be going through a process to essentially develop criteria and an evaluation process to identify potential candidate urban expansion areas outside of those currently designated greenfield areas within both Alora Sale and Fergus. And then we'll be evaluating options for, for expansion based on a broad range of criteria. So that criteria could range from market considerations, available infrastructure, planning and land use considerations like urban structure and contiguous, developing a contiguous urban structure relative to the existing pattern of development within each of the two settlement areas. We'd also look more broadly at hard infrastructure requirements, as well as impacts on ag lands, impacts on the natural heritage system. Those will be some of the key things that will be reviewed and evaluated as part of that, that process in, in phase three.
Thanks for that, Jamie. Councilor Dunsmore.
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Mayor Linton. My questions also come around the agricultural land in our community and the fact that we seem to be eating it up at a, at a rapid pace. Now, you mentioned in phase three, you'll, you'll look at the, the pressures that that puts on agricultural land. Can you, can you give me an idea of what kind of weight went into your numbers? Your, your 12% high density, your 13% medium density? And if we increase that density, what effect would that have on reducing the number of hectares that we would need?
Yeah, through you, again, through you, Mayor Linton, it's a great question, Councilor Dunsmore. I don't know if I can give you the exact stat off the top of my head, but I can tell you that the, the DGA land requirement is rather sensitive to the overall mix of housing by type. We do see a fairly, you know, sensitive relationship there. We've gone to a lot of detail and looking at the overall mix of housing by structure type for the county and for each of the area municipalities. We've been working in this area for a long time and have the benefit of, you know, preparing reports in the past and comparing how things have been progressing and tracking relative to forecasts. We are anticipating somewhat of an ambitious shift towards more medium and high density. But I would say that the shifts are occurring. We're seeing the, where the land use policies want to go and where the market is heading are generally heading in a similar direction. And that is because, as I mentioned, land prices are increasing, housing prices are increasing, affordability is decreasing, and the population is aging. And so all that suggests that we need more choice of housing by structure type, and we expect to see a broader need for medium and high. We feel that the, the forecast that we provided strikes the right balance between achieving the needs of the, the market as, as well as the overarching policy objectives of the, the growth plan. So there's a number of guided, the, the growth plan is a bit of a unique document because it has a number of guiding principles that address things like climate change impacts on agricultural land, compact, a desire for more compact development. But we also have this new added element in both the PPS and the growth plan, which is further reiterated in the LNA, that we also have to look at the, the market requirements, I look at a market based housing approach to, to, to land use planning. So we feel that the overall forecast that we prepared in this, the preferred scenario that we developed strikes the right balance between achieving a mix to accommodate all those broader principles of the plan. But it's not, it wouldn't be something that couldn't be looked at to look at other scenarios. And as you may be aware, you know, other municipalities are, and have been looking at other scenarios that would assume a more denser form of growth to, to minimize urban boundary expansion. And that's something that could be done. But I would say that it, it, it wouldn't be something that I would say would be supportive through market forces alone, and would be maybe challenging even with policy intervention to go much more dense than what we're, than what we're projecting, but something that could be explored.
Although, and Councilor Dunsmore.
Yeah, so, you know, I, this plan comes down from upwards, right? Everything goes from the federal to the provincial and the county and down to us. So what I'm asking is, is there a way we can look at modeling if we raise these numbers on the density from 12 to 13 to 15 and 20 to see what that has on the, on the agricultural land and the wetlands that Councilor McElwain referred to? If we can put less pressure on them, is there, I'm trying to find a way for us to inject ourselves into the conversation before the reports finalize, and we have to do what we're told.
Yeah, just again, through you, Mayor Linton. Just to provide a little bit more background on this, there's really two primary mechanisms of, in ways that you could reduce the, the need for urban land expansion. One is to increase densities within the designated greenfield area. And you're probably going to have more opportunity to do that through the community area. It's, as I mentioned, it's quite difficult to create, to suggest that you're going to build augment densities in industrial areas. We have very little control over how we could influence density trends in the, in the industrial market. And so what we're experiencing elsewhere in other areas where we're conducting landings assessments is that that overall number doesn't seem to change very much from one scenario to another. For example, Waterloo, the region of Waterloo is looking at a number of scenarios for their landings assessment. They don't seem to see changes. We don't see changes on the industrial side, but there are significant changes on the community area. The other area that you can, or way that you can reduce the overall impact on urban expansion is by increasing your share of growth to the built up area. But that's can be equally controversial to expansion. And we know that it's a very challenging policy within Center Wellington because of two things. One, you have a fairly limited amount of, of vacant land or infill development opportunities that can be readily pointed to for, for, for growth within the built up areas of your two settlement areas. You also have significant cultural heritage that we are looking to obviously protect and preserve. So we have been a less aggressive with respect to that input on the LNA and in Center Wellington and more broadly within the county. But just to provide a bit more background, those are the two ways that I would see that happening.
Councilor McCray.
Thank you, Marilyn, through you. Thank you for the update on your review process and efforts to date. There's much information to consider in planning future growth. And for us locally, some key concerns are water availability in terms of aquifer and infrastructure, protecting agricultural land and housing attainability. Most of the questions I would have asked have been asked. However, looking at housing attainability, given concern about having a broader range of affordable housing in our community, should we not be seeing higher medium and high density housing increases sooner than 2036? I mean, I seem to recall in the presentation, we're currently sitting around 14%. I think that was for high density, and now it's dropping down to 12% until 2036. I'm just wondering, should we be considering having higher medium and high density now, rather than waiting till 2036 to address our housing needs?
Through you, Mayor, let's, again, a great question, Councilor McCray. One of the things that we looked at when we're looking at the mix of housing is what are the opportunities that we're currently seeing within the development approvals process? We know that those developments that are in active plans that are, you know, registered on built plans of subdivision or draft plan approved developments give us a fairly good insight into the kind of development we're going to experience in the next five to 10 years, because those are the plans that are currently being reviewed and approved. And that information has been what's been used to largely guide the mix in the short term over the next five to 10 years. And then as we get further out into the forecast period, we, we're then dealing with vacant lands that don't have approvals on them. We're then taking a more aggressive approach to shift the mix towards medium and high over that longer term period. There could be further scenarios that were, could be looked at to, again, to push that further. That would relate to Councilor Dunsmore's question as well, to some extent about having an impact on the, the density and the overall need for urban land. But at this time, we feel that the, the mix that we're providing is inappropriate, again, balance between the market requirements of the LNA and growth plan and the overall arching guiding principles of the plan, and also the county plan and your local plan. But again, something that could be explored through, through further sensitivity testing.
Although.
Yeah, Marilyn, just in a little extension of Councilor McCray's question about how do we get to that higher density and with respect to what we have done in the last seven or eight years, and, and, and your council will know this. The policies in the current official plan for greenfields, and those are the new, called the new subdivision areas. The requirement is for density is approximately six and a half units to the acre, which is relatively low density if you compare with other jurisdictions. We see in those applications, the odd apartment and the odd townhouse to get that density level up. We can certainly look at a higher rate of, of units in the greenfield areas. We will, as you are likely aware, get concerns expressed from the community and neighborhoods. The, the, the only advantage would be these are greenfield areas and they're, they're new. So they're, they're new areas of development. So but I guess what we would want to see as well is council advocating for that kind of development is the higher level of density. I, I think it's, I think it's fair to say, and Brett can elaborate, I think it's fair to say that the development community initially were hesitant to go in the direction of apartments and, and higher density developments, but have accepted that's where they need to go. Again, prescribed by the province, so we, we could look at a higher level of density. But again, it's, it's, it's striking that balance that Jamie has referred to.
I could just maybe add to that, Marilyn, and I'm just also note that unlike other areas where we are doing work in other areas in the, it's critical and horseshoe, the, the county doesn't have, you know, doesn't have a, you know, a transit system, it doesn't have hired or transit opportunities, and it doesn't typically have, in most cases, areas that are rich in infrastructure amenities to accommodate a significant amount of high density. So in other areas where we're looking at developing high density around major transit station areas or in downtown areas where there's more opportunity to, to build up, those opportunities aren't as abundant in, in the county, and they're not as abundant in, in Center Wellington. So it does create, I think, some challenges from a, from a, a land use perspective and, and more broadly, you know, a growth management perspective of, you know, how dense you can make greenfield areas out of those infrastructure, that infrastructure base and the, and the other amenities that go along with an environment that would be conducive to more, you know, significantly more high density. So I think there's probably an upper limit to what would probably be appropriate.
Councilor McCray, following.
Thank you, Marilyn. Just to respond to Jamie and Aldo's comments, I would certainly be in favor of seeing, you know, it's looking more closely at increasing density in the greenfield areas. I mean, within Center Wellington, we have heritage areas where there's, you know, challenges in terms of trying to bring more densification, even gentle densification into those areas. So the fact that we have these greenfield areas that haven't been touched yet, it makes sense to try and increase the density in those areas. The other thing we have to consider is we are going to be a small city, so the more compact we can be, the more it lends itself to in the future, having some form of public transportation to take people between those more dense areas into our downtowns. I think this is something that we have to be looking at now is where can we put the densification today, rather than waiting till later when it may be too late? And I'm thinking, for example, the Fergus Southlands, that's a perfect place to consider more densification with people, you know, using more sustainable transportation methods as opposed to hopping in a car. So I just put that out there and encourage you to consider that.
Thanks, Councilor McCray. Thanks, councilors. Again, this is a matter that came to the township for your information, and it's just an update on, on this project. And hopefully we have an opportunity to have the county staff back as we get further along. Growth is obviously very important to all of us here. So thanks for taking the time, Aldo, Sarah, Jamie and Brad, and presenting and answering questions of council today. And we'll, we'll make sure that we're working together as a county and a township and do whatever we can, given the fact that this is a top down process, but we want to do our best to retain our small town feel. So thanks for the presentation, answering questions today. And we're going to take about a five minute break, get back here at 2:35, and we'll start with the next item on our agenda. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Of the bridge and the project area. So we're on the fifth line, just north of Wellington Road nineteen. And this bridge spans the Irvine Creek. So wanted to provide counsel with just a bit of an overview of where we are today and how we got here. So. We started the study in April of this year. We retained McIntosh Perry to assist us with the Schedule B municipal class EA study. We issued a notice of study commencement in May. We presented an overview of the project to both Township Heritage Committee and Township Council in June. In September, we provided some key cultural studies, so the Cultural Heritage Evaluation Report and the Cultural Heritage Impact Assessment. To the Township Heritage Committee for their information. We then presented in October, the preferred option that we're presenting to council here today. We presented that option to Township Heritage Committee. And to to provide them with that information. And here we are in November, seeking endorsement of the preferred alternative from Township Council. Pending endorsement of this alternative, we proceed to, as I mentioned. Publish this notice of study completion, which would be out for forty-five day public review period. And then on conclusion of that review period, the study would be completed. We anticipate in January of twenty twenty-two. We then proceed to detail design in twenty twenty-two and construction in twenty twenty-three. So just an overview of the consultation we've done as part of this project. So we developed a robust stakeholder list. Of government agencies, members of the public indigenous communities. And of course, members of council also and our committees here at the township. So we've consulted with indigenous communities directly. We've met with council and heritage committee. We held an online public information center in September where we obtained feedback from members of the public. And and as I mentioned, presented had some focus meetings with heritage committee. To present the study and the evaluations from a heritage perspective. So as I mentioned, we're municipal class A study, we're following the municipal class environmental assessment process and there's a link here for more details on that process. So I'll turn it over to Lisa now to walk us through the alternatives, the evaluation and how we arrived at the preferred alternative.
Thank you. So as we, you know, just a bit of a recap of where we left off at our last presentation. There's just a couple of first slides that will do an overview and then we'll get into the evaluation that we we did unearth during the EA process. So to to address the problem and opportunity statement, we developed the final following preliminary alternative solutions. And evaluated them based on studies and consultation. So the alternatives we looked at were. Alternative one, do nothing. Alternative two, remove the existing bridge and construct turnaround areas on either side of the bridge. Alternative three, replace the existing bridge with new structure. And alternative four was rehab the existing bridge. So prior to pending the EA, the township undertook a few studies on their own. They did a stage one and two archaeological assessment. Cultural heritage impact assessment and geotechnical investigation. During our EA process, we looked at terrestrial and aquatic ecosystem review. Associate economic review. A cultural heritage resource evaluation, cultural heritage impact assessment. Structural review and a drainage analysis, hydraulic analysis. The existing structure was built in nineteen ten. An exception report completed nineteen seventy-seven. Noted that the structured had remaining life service life of ten years. In twenty twelve, an inspection was done and it was noted that the structure retaining walls were being displaced. And therefore, it was evident that the bridge was moving. Fall of twenty seventeen, a five-ton load restriction was posted on the structure and overhead frames installed at the approaches. In spring twenty twenty-one, the bridge was closed. Based on these inspections and investigations, rehabilitation has been determined not to be feasible from a structural engineering perspective. Due to the continued movement of the structure retaining walls and the spandrel arch. As well as the concrete is showing significant deterioration. Along the arch at the top as well as a lack of as-built information to support rehabilitation. Cultural heritage evaluations were done on the structure. So in twenty thirteen, a cultural heritage impact assessment was completed. Which determined that the bridge had one of the elements required to determine to have cultural heritage value or interest. In May of twenty twenty-one, we completed a cultural heritage evaluation report. Which supported the twenty thirteen report and found that the bridge is a rare example of a solid spindle concrete arch bridge from the earliest twentieth century. Due to these findings, we completed additional cultural heritage impact assessment in July twenty twenty-one. To examine the potential impacts to each of the alternative solutions that I just previously mentioned through the aid process. And to provide mitigation measures, recommendations moving forward. The archaeological assessment, stage one and stage two didn't find any archaeological findings and therefore wasn't warranted to do any further investigations. The bridges located within the Grand River Conservation Authority regulatory area. The study area and tree in areas strictly adjacent to lands. Are identified as core greenlands and greenlands with some recreational areas such as the Highlands Pines Campgrounds. During our natural environmental investigations, the following observations were made. No rare species or vegetation communications were found. Habitat found supported a variety of wildlife species, migratory birds and potential species at risk. No nasper observed under the structure. And SARS knowledge presented within the study area and adjacent to include barn swallows and red side dates. Irvine Creek is also known to be a cold water tributary of the Grand River. Which supports a variety of fish, including brook trout and various our species like the red side dates. The alternative systems were then evaluated using following criteria. We looked at a structural and technical, so safety, traffic operations. Construction station duration and extensive of service life. We also looked at from a natural environment perspective, which is environmental sensitive areas, wildlife and habitat, fisheries and aquatic habitat and species at risk. We also looked at social and economic conditions, the archaeological and heritage, construction impacts. And finally, we looked at it from a financial point of view from a capital cost and operation maintenance cost. So the next few slides I'm going to walk through are mainly with respect to a summary of what we found in the evaluation process, what the pros and cons were. And what solution became evident to be the most preferred alternative moving forward. So the first one was alternative one was do nothing. The pros of it was no construction related impacts, no terrestrial wildlife, groundwater, climate impacts. And this one had the lowest capital cost due to minimal project scope. The cons associated with this one, it does not provide conductivity for the traffic over the Irvine Creek. Does it not extend service life and may pose significant structural engineering risks down the road. Continued deterioration of the bridge may impose significant impacts to the environment. Not considered viable alternative from a heritage perspective. Alternative to remove the bridge and construct turnaround areas. Permanently addresses safety concerns with the bridge, provides a turnaround area on either side of the structure. No structural engineering risks, no anticipated natural environment impacts. Cost a second lowest and service life is unrestricted. It's feasible from a heritage perspective with bridge conservation mitigation measures being put in place. The cons associated with this one, it does not provide conductivity for traffic over the Irvine Creek. Removal the bridge may impact emergency response times. And also the potential for longer brute times from municipal service vehicles. Alternative three, replacement of the structure. This will reinstate the connectivity for the fifth line traffic over the structure. This addresses safety concerns by providing two lanes of traffic. The anticipated extension of service life would be seventy-five years. It will provide a larger hydraulic opening to support conveyance of bigger storm events. And it's feasible from a heritage perspective with the bridge conservation mitigations measures being implemented. This one, however, is the highest capital cost. It has more economical solution based though. For an extension of the service life of seventy-five years. Operational maintenance costs are anticipated as second highest. Potential grade raises may be required at residential property entrances. And moderate construction related impacts. Alternative four, reinstate connectivity for fifth line traffic over the Irvine Creek. No long-term impacts to emergency services. Most preferred option from a heritage perspective. The cons associated with this one is heritage or sorry rehabilitation is not considered viable from a bridge engineering perspective. Due to its current structural condition. Does not address safety concerns. Height and load postings may still be required once rehab is completed. Cost a second highest, however, least economical base from extension service life. It does it only provide an approximate fifty-year extension. Existing bridge does not meet the current MTO hydraulic design criteria. So during the open house, we received a number of comments from the public. One being from a resident, they stated, I've gone through the provided material and presentation in detail. And fully on board with the replacement and believe this to be the best alternative. We also received a secondary comment. It would seem that option three would be the sensible conclusion. But perhaps the design of future bridge could include some aspects of the current bridge that makes our little bridge so special. We also received two additional comments with respect to concerns of vehicle speeds along the roadway and over the structure. And requested that speed reduction measures be considered during the detailed design phase. Based on the evaluation of all the alternative solutions, alternative three provided the best balance of benefits from a transportation operation perspective. Technical and structural as well as minimal impacts to the natural environment. The new bridge will meet operational safety standards by widening the deck platform to allow for two lanes of traffic. As per the twenty twenty-one heritage assessment. Alternative three is feasible from a heritage perspective as long of as if as long as includes or considers including, I should say. The following measures, so follow recording and documentation of the structure. And within a cultural heritage resource document. Design and placement on site of a commander of plaque and incorporation of a sympathetic design elements into the structure if deemed feasible. The Centre Wellington Committee will be involved, has requested to be involved during the detailed design to provide input on the design and heritage. Mitigation strategies. And then upon council endorsement of the recommended TPA, the notice completion will be advertised, which will provide a forty-day review period of the project file report.
Yeah, thanks very much, Lisa, for that. So just ended off here. So our milestones going forward. So presenting. To council here today, seeking endorsement of the preferred alternative. Will be advertising for a forty-five day period, starting in December, pending endorsement and in January, we'd be preparing a letter. Indicating the project has been completed and it would proceed to detail design in twenty twenty-two, construction twenty twenty-three. So thank you very much and happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Thanks very much, Adam. Thanks very much, Lisa. Over to questions to council. Council McCray.
Thank you, Mayor Linton, through you. Adam, I agree with the recommendation. I appreciate the fact that it will be a dual rather than a single lane bridge and has sufficient width to support our modern day farm vehicles. And I also like the larger opening to promote greater water flow under the structure. So yeah, I'm in favor of this.
Councilor Donsmore?
Yeah, I too am in favor of this because it it lets more water through and it does allow for the heavier farm equipment to get across and it just makes more sense.
Councilor Ketchus?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions. My first question is. In alternative two. What's, you said it was the second lowest. Cost. And I was wondering what is the actual cost for the. Bridge removal and the construction of turnarounds. Is there a separate cost for each of those? And I was wondering what they were.
I don't have that value off the top of my head. I apologize. But we could definitely provide that. Oh, Adam, you go for it.
Yeah, thanks, Lisa. So yeah, actually, so I do. So we did prepare some high level. Yeah, that's okay. So yeah, thank you for the question, Council Ketchus. So through you, Mary Linton. There were some high level estimates of cost prepared through the EA study. The estimate of cost for alternative two was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that would be, I believe, a life cycle or sorry, that was a capital cost. So that would be the cost of removing the bridge and constructing the turnarounds from what I understand.
Councilor Ketchus, follow on?
Um, my second question, thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering, what is, I mean, it's a hundred and eleven years old. And I'm wondering what the maintenance schedule and what kind of costs we put in. On the maintenance and how often was that in the last fifteen years?
Who's the best one to ask for that one? Colin, do you want to take a stab at the work that we do on the maintenance side of all our bridges?
Yep. Yeah, yeah, through you, Mary Linton, to to Council Ketchus. So. Yeah, so it depends on the structure, the the extent of of maintenance activities. We, as counselors are aware, we we do a full inspection of all hundred and ten structures. So that's. Bridges and culverts with a greater than three meter span. We do have a structural engineering firm, take a look at at each one of those and and provide us with with recommendations for. Repairs, rehabilitations. And and so we work those into the to the capital budgeting process. Or complete those through the through our operating accounts. So so typical like repairs that. That for sixteen WG that would have happened over the years, like repairs to the railing. We would have been grading. It's a it's a gravel deck. And so just monitoring the the depth of gravel on that. On that surface across the structure. And and kind of smoothing out the potholes and and whatnot would be some typical maintenance activities on that structure, but. This one is kind of, you know, we've been been watching it fairly closely. It's because the. The arches, the the two sides aren't connected together. With any sort of cross support that we're aware of, as as Lisa mentioned, we don't have the as-built drawings. So we're not a hundred percent sure. But with the with the structure kind of splaying outward, that was assigned to us that it's getting, it was. You know, really getting close to the end of its service life. So we started watching it. I believe on a six-month cycle, starting in two thousand thirteen. And and just keeping an eye on the on the side walls of that structure. And watching that displacement each spring and each fall and just making sure that we're, you know. Just just keeping an eye on it and and you know, putting load restrictions and the height limiter and then ultimately the closing, making sure that. That we're catching those at the right time. So hopefully that answers the question.
Thanks, Colin. Councilor McQueen?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Councilor Van Loon?
Thanks. I have no further questions either.
Councilor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Adam Gilmore as well. Adam, you mentioned. Sympathetic design elements for the new bridge. My question would be. Given the long history in West Garfrazza Township of Charlie Mottany's bridges with the archway that everyone is so fond of. Could we start to incorporate those those decorative archways back into new bridges, even even if they were decorative rather than structural? So I guess my question, Adam, is number one, can we do that? And can you give me a sense of? The the archways would not be structural like they were in the past. So therefore, what? This is a real ballpark. What sort of? Costs would it would result from adding on the decorative archways that are part of our cultural heritage?
Adam?
Yeah, thanks, Council Foster for the question through you, Mary Linton. So that is something very preliminary stages right now in terms of what the eventual design of the bridge might be, but that is something that we have considered. Because that's certainly feedback that we heard through the consultation process. I I know an option in terms of decorative features, kind of similar to what was done in the Jack McDonald pedestrian bridge. That's kind of a decorative. Arch feature that's almost like a curtain wall that hangs down from the bridge deck. There are options like that. Something that that needs to be weighed again during the detailed design stage of the project. Is the trade-off between having a decorative arch feature like that and impeding the potential flow of water under the bridge. So anytime we add a feature like that, we're reducing the cross-sectional area for flow through the bridge. And yeah, yeah, no, that that's right. And so we would have to kind of take that into consideration. In terms of costs, it's hard to say at this time. Certainly, there would be added cost for if we were to add a feature like that. But I think that that's something we'll certainly investigate during the detailed design stage of the project.
Thanks, Adam. Follow on, Council Foster?
Just just for clarity's sake, Adam, I was referring to an archway above the deck. So there'd be no impact on impeding water flow. That's an important piece of our architectural history, those archways above the bridge deck. And so I think it would. Be prudent to at least consider those as we replace the bridges in West Gary. It's an important part of our cultural history. Colin, my second question, Mayor, is to Colin Baker. Colin, I I didn't really hear an answer to Council Ketchus's question. I believe he was specific to this bridge, not the other bridges. How much and how often did we spend? Maintaining the structural elements of this particular bridge in the last fifteen years. I I didn't really hear an answer to that specific question. This bridge and how often in the in the fifteen years before its closure, did we? Did we look at the structural elements and maintain or otherwise augment them?
Did you have anything to add to the part, the answer that you provided, Council Ketchus, Colin?
Yeah, yeah, through through Mary Linton. Yeah, I would just add. You know, in in the case of sixteen WG. It's from what I recall, it hasn't been on any of our rehab programs. So. So when we when we do a rehab of a structure, we are looking to get additional service life out of the structure. And so in this case with sixteen WG. It really wasn't going to provide any additional service life. This is a bridge that is is at the end of its service life. And and doing any sort of rehab to extend its service life just wouldn't be, wouldn't be feasible. So so this there. So really in terms of, I guess, what like a minor repairs or or sorry, minor rehabs or a major rehab. Yeah, the other than kind of regular maintenance.
We didn't do a thing.
Inscribed earlier.
So we hadn't done really a thing in the twenty years ending the closure.
Yes, that's that's correct.
Okay, I will read the recommendation. That the Council of Township Centre Wellington endorsed preferred alternative number three, replace existing bridge with a new structure for the bridge sixteen WG. Municipal class environmental assessment study as outlined in report number IS zero twenty twenty-one dash seventeen. Date of November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, and that council direct staff to publish the notice of study completion for the bridge sixteen WG. Municipal class environmental assessment study in accordance with the requirements under the Environmental Assessment Act. Move her for that, please. Councilor Donsmore, second by Council McCray, all in favor? And that is carried. Thank you very much. To the engineering team, Adam, Lisa, Colin, for a good report. Thanks, council. Moving on to seven point three. Township Centre Wellington Speed Limit Policy and Technical Approach. And again, we turn it to Adam for your report.
Yes, thanks very much, Mary Linton. And just sharing my screen here, just want to confirm everybody can see that again. Great. Okay, yeah, so here today to present to you results of a. A process that we're proposing to review speed limits. Identify areas where speeding is occurring and implement. Measures to reduce speeds and improve safety. So we're really, really excited about this process and happy to be here to with you today to present it. I should mention also, I'm joined by Adam Dickerson, our engineering services coordinator. So I'll present the first few slides and Adam will take over at the end. So yeah, I mentioned the purpose. Of the report. So what are the benefits of a defined and consistent approach? So we anticipate it's going to result in a better in better compliance of speed limits is limits will actually be based on road characteristics. And will reflect, you know, kind of how fast drivers are actually comfortable with traveling on roads and how safe it is to travel that speed on roads. It will reduce speeds, improve safety by targeting strategic areas where we know speeding is an issue. Will create a process that's consistent with the speed management process developed by the county through their roads master action plan. It will be defensible decision-making process will assist with in the event of defense claims from accidents. And provide measurable benefits to safety at a reasonable implementation cost. So I I mentioned consistency with the county. So this is really important for us. So we've been following along intently the county's speed management guidelines that are draft that they've presented. So in developing our process, we really wanted to build on the county's framework. But work in some of the unique differences associated with the townships network and the townships safety considerations more at the local traffic level. So there are three key steps to this process. The first is to review the current posted speed to determine is that current supposed posted speed appropriate? Or should it be reduced? The second step is to identify and confirm the speeding concern. So perhaps we've been hearing from residents that there are speeding issues. We want to confirm that that is indeed the case. We want this to be a data-driven approach. So we want to back up the concerns with the data to confirm that, yes, speeding is occurring. It is a problem in this area. And then finally, where we confirm that speeding is an issue, we want to apply. And I really want to emphasize the word effective speed reduction measures. So. We've developed a bit of a toolbox in terms of speed reduction measures. And we want to pick the right ones that are going to work and, you know, for the for the problem at hand. So the first step to provide a bit more information. So we're using, we're 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 largely relying on tools from the Transportation Association of Canada. Which is the industry standard here in Canada in terms of reviewing and setting speed limits. So we're using a tool from the TAC that allows us to determine is a current speed limit appropriate? What should the posted speed limit be? Should we consider a reduction? So this tool takes into consideration the attributes of the road. The alignment, any hazards or geometric deficiencies that might be in place. And then we also want to consider, you know, what what speeds are we seeing in that area? So that's telling us what what speed are drivers comfortable driving at? History of collisions, how has is there a history of collisions in the area? And neighboring land use also very important. So are there sent sensitive? Land uses in the area, schools, hospitals, daycares. And we want to kind of consider all of these things together. To develop a bit of a reasoned argument for either, you know, maintaining the current posted speed limit or revising and lowering the speed limit. So the key outcome of this part of the process is, should the speed limit be changed? AKA, should it be lowered? If the answer is yes, we would revise the speed limit. If the answer is no, we would maintain the speed limit. Then we proceed to step two of the process. So step two is to identify and confirm if speeding, if there is a real speed concern in this area. So we want to take into consideration feedback from the public. So the input that we we receive from the public with respect to concerns. Our our staff experience and history. Importantly, the traffic and speed data. So I mentioned, we want this to be a data-driven process. We want to actually be collecting data. And then we're using some key benchmarks. So we're looking at the eighty-fifth percentile of speed and we're saying if it's over ten kilometers per hour in the urban in an urban setting, we have a speeding issue. If it's over fifteen kilometers per hour in a rural setting, we have an issue. And just to recap here, the we talked about the eighth fifth percentile speed and and transportation traffic entering quite a bit. And what does that mean? That's the speed at which eighty-five percent of vehicles are traveling equal to or less than that speed. And fifteen percent of vehicles are traveling over that speed. So we want to identify is is there a real speeding issue in this area? If the answer is yes, we're proceeding to step number three. If the answer is no, we're concluding our assessment at that point. So if we have a speeding concern, we want to be implementing measures to improve safety, reduce those speeds. So we have this toolkit of measures available and we've kind of divided them into two categories here, short-term measures and long-term measures. So short-term measures are things like flexible bollards, speed displaced signs, speed humps, enhanced enforcement. Education outreach. Longer-term measures are things like capital improvements. So for reconstructing a road. Can we change a configuration of that road, include curb bump outs, on-street parking, things that we know have the effect of of causing drivers to reduce their speed. Things like photo radar, also a longer-term program we could implement and community safety zones. So I'd say the short-term measures are more kind of the weeks to months timeframe in terms of things we can implement. The longer term are more in the order of years. So it's not enough just to implement these measures. We want to know are the measures that we've implemented effective. So we want to follow up after we've implemented them. We want to collect some more data and determine, are we actually seeing a change in driver behavior as a result of implementing those measures? If the answer is yes, we know we've implemented an effective measure. If the answer is no, we want to kind of. If the answer is no, we want to kind of go back to start of step three and look at, okay, can we try something else? So I'm going to turn it over to Adam now, who's going to walk us through, we've built a bit of a hypothetical example to illustrate to council how this will work in practice. So Adam, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Thanks, Adam, and thank you, council and mayor for allowing me to also contribute to this report. So to further what Adam Gilmore has already spoken to, this is an example that would maybe help us all understand how it could translate into some changes in areas that have been identified by the public or others and how these steps would work. So the first step, as Adam has outlined earlier, is to review the current speed limit. So what we're doing here is we're taking a hypothetical street in an urban setting with known concerns and the existing speed limit is 50 kilometers an hour. So the first thing is, is to use the resource that is commonly used through many municipalities is the Transportation Association of Canada's guideline, which when you analyze the road's cross-section, you're forced to review all the technical aspects that that current road allowance already possesses. And it'll translate into what is an appropriate speed. Also, at the same time, looking at the 85th percentile of the speed, so there'd be some traffic monitoring that would take place. We take a look at the collision history. There could very well be in this hypothetical situation a known collision history and the neighboring land use. So in this hypothetical situation, the findings, we're going to say, were there was poor sightlines. So drivers can't see clearly down the roads because of obstructions. There's blind curves. There has been several accidents on record. And there's also a local school board on this particular road section. So after all those findings and analysis has occurred, it's been determined that a new lower speed of 40 kilometers an hour limit is warranted as per this technical speed limit review. So the second step in our hypothetical situation, now that we've determined that 40 kilometer hours zone is more appropriate from the technical research that's been done, now we're going to identify and confirm these speed concerns. And what that means is taking a look at what the public and police have seen, staff experiences that are also inputted and analyzed by the staff and taking a closer look at the overall traffic and speed data in the area. And then finally, this increment of the 85 percentile, which is, takes a look at how the drivers are driving and what they're comfortable at driving on that road section. So in this hypothetical situation, the findings are that the 85th percentile of the drivers are driving at a speed that's 87, or I'm sorry, that is 57 kilometers an hour. So that is well beyond 10 kilometers over the posted speed limit. So what it would translate into is that the that typical drivers driving greater than what is posted. So it also kind of confirms the fact that something needs to be done. So that's when step three comes in. How are we going to effectively change the driver's behavior? Not only just put up the speed limit signs, but force the driver to behave and drive differently. So now we've determined that 40 kilometer hours is the appropriate speed limit to be posted. We also know that people are driving faster than they should in this area in our hypothetical situation. So what are we going to do? We're going to implement two different strategies for traffic calming. We're going to take a look at, is there a short-term or long-term traffic calming solution that is appropriate for this particular hypothetical situation? So given that this was near school and the short-term solution in our hypothetical situation is to put speed advisory ballards. One I was speaking of is in the bottom left-hand corner of this particular slide. There's a speed advisory ballard, something like that, that the drivers can see easily. And speed display signs and education and outreach as well. So those are the short-term solutions to help effectively do something to change driver behavior. And the long-term solutions are things that'll have to be implemented as part of a greater capital street redesign. So it's something that can't be brought forward until that capital project's been properly identified and budgeted for. So in our hypothetical situation, again, there would be a relining in the street to get rid of some of these sharper curves and there'd be a newer side or wider sidewalk for the kids making their way to school. And of course, those things have to be budgeted and then brought forth through the reconstruction. So I think that's, so just in conclusion about our little example here is to find, after all this technical analysis is done, that these appropriate changes are made over time, starting with the lowering of the speed limit and then getting into the short and long-term traffic calming measures as well.
Okay, thanks, Adam. So in terms of how we're going to implement this, our next step. So step one, the speed review process, we're proposing to develop a list of high priority roads that we're going to assess the speed limits on these roads and report back to council with the results of this assessment in the winter of 2022. We would then assess the remainder of the network. And the results of this assessment would serve as input into a new consolidated speed bylaw that we're proposing that would include the revised speed recommendations, if any result from that review. And then would be brought into kind of into force through the bylaw. Following on this, steps two and three, so the process of actually identifying these and confirming these speeding areas. We would then do a review of areas that we know, you know, we've had lots of input from the public on kind of hot areas for speeding, perhaps. We'd look at those areas first and then gather data, put it through the process, determine is there a speeding issue? And then finally, you know, what short-term measures can we implement as, you know, in the near term? And then longer term, how can we, how can we build that into our capital plan? Perhaps to, you know, to coordinate those changes with plans for reconstructing these areas. So we're also proposing to streamline this process a bit from a staff perspective in that, you know, we receive a number of these concerns from residents, you know, throughout the year. So we're proposing to perhaps log those concerns. And then once, you know, on a yearly basis, take a look at all the concerns and look at it a little more holistically and what can be done. You know, from a traffic calming perspective, what tools can we go and use from our toolbox to try and improve safety, reduce travel speeds in the problem areas? So we propose to do that in the winter of each year. It would inform the yearly budget process. And of course, you know, if we were to receive concerns that we felt were, you know, an immediate risk to health and safety, we would address those right away. But I think we would have more of this kind of logging process and then look at things in a holistic way on a yearly basis. So that's everything we have and happy to answer any questions you have at this time. Thank you.
Thanks very much, team Adam. Appreciate all the thought and the work that has gone into this. I really appreciate how coordinated you are being with this project and the work that's being done at the county with the roads master plan. I know both township councillors and county councillors all get aggressive driving and speeding complaints on a regular basis. I know I do. And so doing this work in consultation with the county and moving in the same direction is absolutely critical to make sure that we have a consistent way of and an appropriate way of doing our speed limits across Centauillington. So I'll turn things over to our councillors for their thoughts and comments, starting with councillor Foster.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to both Adams for your report. We all get many, many complaints about speeding. We all know this. It's a big problem. Quite frankly, it's a safety issue. Driver behavior is a difficult thing to change, I realize. But and I'm generally supportive of what you're doing here, fellows. However, the one thing that really concerns me is I don't see anything in this policy document or study about increasing enforcement. And quite frankly, I feel that people speed when they know they can get away with it. And that's the case in our community. So I guess my question is to the two Adams, how do we get more speeding enforcement by the police in this policy or on the ground? Because ultimately, that's what, there's nothing like a speeding ticket to change driver behavior. How do we achieve that objective? That's how we'll change behavior.
Gilmore?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Linton. Thank you, councillor Foster, for the question through you, Mayor Linton. So enforcement certainly is in the toolbox in terms of options we have to try and change driver behavior. So we've lumped it into kind of the short-term measure toolbox. So and that's in terms of enhanced enforcement. We do work collaboratively with the OPP. When we become aware of an area where speeding perhaps is a concern. And we have some examples recently where, you know, we've heard from residents, we've reached out to the OPP and said, you know, do you have the resources to do enhanced enforcement in this area at this time? And, you know, they've been, they've worked with us to try and do that. You know, they like to collect data also and use a data approach in terms of where they kind of focus their resources. So there certainly has been cooperation with the OPP. And we would intend to kind of continue that cooperation and perhaps even enhance that cooperation. You know, we can use this, this policy and technical approach as a bit of a jump off point to kind of reach out to them, get their input on it and, you know, continue that good working relationship going forward.
Thanks, Adam. Councillor Van Loon?
Thanks, both Adams. I like the report and their process makes a lot of sense. So thank you for this new process.
Councillor McQuain?
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks to Adam squared. I'm just curious, you don't mention rural roads a lot in your discussion. And I'm particularly concerned about the speeding on the rural roads. And one of the things that I keep getting a lot of feedback from residents of rural roads is the fact that most of our side roads do not have a shoulder to walk on. And that doesn't seem to be a criteria that you have listed anywhere in what you're looking at as something that needs to be taken into consideration for lowering speed limits. So I'm just wondering, is it something that will be considered when you're going forward, Adam? Go ahead.
Okay, through you, Mayor Linton, councillor McQuain. With the TAC approach, that transportation of Canada's measurable method of determining an appropriate speed limit, they do, there are criteria that are applicable to any roadway. And that includes a very narrow gravel road with very little shoulder. So the dimensions of the entire roadway are analyzed. We look at the road width, the lane width, and is there a shoulder or not? There's other things that are looked at in the rural setting as well through that process. Looking at the number of entrances and sightlines, hills and curves and valleys and other things that make driving speeds a little bit determine what is appropriate, I suppose, is what I'm trying to say. So there are measures throughout this process that'll identify the area of like a narrow roadway that you're speaking of, that we can take a hard look at what's going on and what is appropriate speed to be traveling.
So Adam, just to follow up with that, because I think councillor McQuain, he sees that there's an 80 on the Salem School Road, whatever that's called. It's an 80 and it is almost no shoulders, but other county roads are also 80. So is part of the process that we're going to go through, looking at features like that to maybe suggest a different a different speed limit for those roads that have narrower shoulders? Is that a potential?
Through you, Mayor Linton. It was, I think what we're going to see is that regardless of where the roadway is, we'll have the appropriate method to determine what is the right speed to, in speaking with other municipalities about, let's say, a blanket approach that, you know, every roadway that is a certain, has a certain lane width, is going to be a certain speed, is not necessarily the appropriate way to go about it. You have to take a look at the features along a road segment that can impact what is an appropriate speed limit to implement on those roadways. So I'm not sure if I'm answering your question fully, but my, with the use of that TAC manual and the evaluation that it provides will effectively give us an appropriate speed limit to be posted.
Okay, thanks, Adam. Councillor Kittriss?
Thank you, Mayor. I have several questions. I'd like to thank you all for doing this report because I've wanted this kind of approach and get some sort of plan for speeding. One of the most frequent things is getting calls about speeding and in the rural areas too. And so I'm wondering, my first question is, you say you're data-driven. So are you going to be using radar and counting the number of drivers? And is that going to be part of the process to collect the data like the police do? Is that what you're doing? Not just the number of vehicles, but the actual speed?
Adam Gilmore?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Linton. Thank you, councillor Kittriss, for the question. So I think that's where we're headed. We recognize that that type of data is really the type of data I think we need to properly kind of characterize the issue, understand it and, you know, and provide us with the rationale for making adjustments or identifying areas where we should be implementing traffic calming. So, yeah, we have access to some of that information through the OPP, for example. We also do traffic count surveys, although the data we get from those is perhaps not as robust as a radar dataset perhaps. So I think that may be where we're headed in terms of trying to, you know, to build on those datasets with radar.
I just want to also add that the OPP has black cat data that they share with both the county and the townships that gets into a little bit more information on speeds, numbers and that kind of stuff. So there is a connection back to the OPP and the work that they do. And I know our team is privy to that information from time to time as well. Councillor Kittriss, follow on?
Thank you, Mayor. I live right on the county line and I often go to Waterloo. And there's a town, Winterbourne, and they use the ballards initially before we used the ballards. And now I noticed that they're putting in a radar ticketing camera. And I'm just wondering, what, that's about the enforcement? Because obviously they tried the baller, they did.
That and I'm just wondering what that's about the enforcement, because obviously they tried the baller. They did. They did some stuff and it didn't work. And so now they've gone into this radar camera for the plates. Um, how much does that cost? And is that a possible mobile? Thing that could happen in a sense of like you have it there, but then you could switch it to somewhere else. I'm just wondering, is there technology for that?
Dickinson?
Through through you, Mayor Linton, councillor Kitcher. Yeah, I'm aware of of those location you speak of, and. I think the county is 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 looking at those types of things on their county road allowances, but. When it comes to our township roads and township streets, it's less likely. The. Highway tra- Traffic Act has allowed municipalities to implement those. Ticketing photo radar systems in areas where there's schools present. So it's it's really decided upon if there's a school. It's not something that can be arbitrary arbitrarily selected. It has to be a a school zone, and there's quite a bit of administration trying to implement such a system. It's not just something you put the batteries in and set it up and tickets start getting fired up. It would it would require quite a bit of implementation administration, but. I I and and the follow up with the cost councillor Kittriss, I'm not exactly sure what it would be per location, but. It's something we could look into. And again, I think it'd be more for those. Well, travel corridors where those. School zones are and 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 in in the major. Arterial kind of roadway system, but. I suppose there is potential. I think it'd be something we would have to collaborate with our 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 county friends on.
And that will be something that is coming out of the roads, master plan and discussion on that. And I. I know there are a number of councillors, both county and township, that are interested in looking at the pros and cons of of a system like that, for sure. Councillor Dunsmore?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Doesn't matter. There's probably Adam Dickinson's probably first up the bat. Only because I think you've been here longer. What kind of historic data do we have on traffic studies? That we've done for speeding? This can't be the new thing that we just kind of started looking at this. So there must be a historic databank on some of the roads that people have been complaining about.
Councillor Denzmore, through through you, Mayor Linton. Yeah, we we've been conducting some traffic counts on an annual basis. We. Capture. Glimpse of the volume and some speeds and where we do a three year rotation where we get. A glimpse of what traffic's doing in in the majority of our roadway system. So we have, we have a pool of data. But the the traffic counts, as Adam Gilmore alluded to earlier, aren't necessarily as robust like. The traffic counts are only for a course of a few days where if we know if there's a problem area, I think the appropriate way to really find out. What driver behavior is to have it up for a number of weeks and really get a good handle on. Is it maybe just a perceived speeding situation, or is there really an an actual? Careless driving stream that's that's traveling through there. So, yes, we have historic traffic counts, but they're not. As full as I think we'd want to base a decision on to lower speed limits.
But and that's that's what I was getting at. So this is going to be a more in depth gathering of of information and data. You, the report talks about public input. So can somebody walk me through what that public input is going to look like? Because we get all the emails from our our constituents. So are we referring that to a particular individual within the township now? And are you sharing those complaints that we'll get with the OPP? So that we can address councillor Foster's concern about enforcement if we share that data back and forth. So can you help me with that?
Adam Gilmore?
Yeah, thanks, councillor Dunsmore, through you, Mayor Linton. So we we're certainly turning our minds to to how that's going to work. And I think the way we envision it is we'd like to create, you know, a bit of a one window. Here at the staff level to to field those concerns. And a central log that will maintain to to kind of log all the concerns that we receive. So that we can do that review, that comprehensive review. We're kind of working out the nuts and bolts still. Step one, we want to start with the process, kind of confirm we're on the right track there. And then I think we'll work out internally kind of how that looks, but I think a one window type of of process would work well. We have a great program now in citywide, which is our our asset management. And 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 work order software that we can use. To log those types of concerns that we receive also, and and, you know, have that kind of output reports. You know, to to help us to kind of organize those those concerns. But yeah, we we have a few tools that we can use. And we're turning our minds to that part of the the process more than nuts and bolts level.
Good, because that's that's important. If we have that one stop, one window that you're talking about, we can direct residents there. Will you be asking council to put in any kind of information as far as trouble spots where you would like us to recommend to you? Where you could start your research, because I think every one of us here could probably give you five areas in their in their ward that you could start doing that. That research on is problem areas, because I think we all have them. So are you going to ask us for that? Are we going to give that to you, or do you just want to let it come up from the residents?
You guys are both wanting to answer this one.
I I think it's a quick answer. Councillor Dunsmore's, yes, please. You know, we would love, we would love that feedback from council. I think we I think we know some of the areas, we're familiar with them. But certainly, you know, I think we could, we could put it forward and ask to council to kind of help guide us towards. Some of those problem areas, and that would be welcome feedback.
Okay, and last question, your worship, that's okay. One more.
Yeah, go ahead, councillor.
So the last one, and it's not a really question as much as it is is a request. And that's with the county. You guys are communicating with the county. I remember when we asked for this report originally, we talked about photo radar. And the hornet's nest that that is, because it's across jurisdictional, goes to the county, goes to the province and stuff. But I think that's key that we pursue that. Because the definition they have right now of the community safety zone, i.e. a school zone, is quite limited. And even in my ward, I've got a school zone where people are speeding through, but on the back end of the school where where the majority of the kids go, they walk. Behind the park and out onto the next road. That's not classified as a school zone, but that's where the majority of the kids are. So we need to look at that as as can we expand those school zones? And that will take communication between the county. The township and the province. So that's, those are my final thoughts.
I just wanted to add a little bit of information from a county perspective, councillor Dunsmore. So. The the first process that the county has to go through in order to even consider automated speed enforcement is. It can only automated speed enforcement ASC can only happen if you designate community or school safety zones. Those are the only places where you can put ASC in place. So the county is taking the first step and looking at what areas could be. What what are how many school zones or or community safety zones we have? That needs to have a communication back to the township, and it's only in those areas that we can consider. ASC in the future. So we are moving in that direction, and we'll we'll have that discussion at a county level, and obviously. Center of Wellington, being the largest urban centre, will have a lot to say in those discussions for sure. And I'll make sure I touch base with the councillors here and. And our staff will be talking to county staff as well to make sure we continue to be on the same page with that on that one. Councillor McCrae?
Thank you, Mayor Linton. Thank you to both Adams for your presentation. I certainly support the staff's proposed strategy, and I'd just like to share with fellow councillors. My having the opportunity to witness firsthand this strategy being applied. We've had challenges with the Salem School. With traffic flow reported speeding, and I spent. Part of a morning standing on the side of the road with a staff member observing firsthand what was actually going on. Then interviewing the teachers, interviewing other people to understand. More of the challenges locally, and staff came up with a very good solution to the problem, which. Involves parents arriving, dropping their children off at school and trying to park on the side of a narrow shoulder. Dropping kids off, they're stepping out into traffic. It was sheer chaos, and staff came up with a plan to reroute the parents down the side street. Go in on a certain angle, drop off your students and have them walk escorted across the. Crosswalk. So that seemed to have solved the problem there. Another situation we had was a large number of trucks going through an intersection, which was upsetting local residents. And again. Staff were able to look at it, call up the contractor and arrange to have the trucks diverted. And. So I'd just like to say that staff generally are very responsive and helpful in trying to solve these problems. So I look forward to seeing how this. Unfolds. One question I have for Adam Gilmore. Are there aspects of the speed limit policy that can be applied during design reviews or proposed future developments? So we're being proactive to identify. Possible driver and pedestrian behavior on streets that are being proposed. I'm just wondering, is that something we're looking at as well?
Adam?
Yeah, thanks, councillor McCrae, and through you, Mayor Linton. Absolutely. I think it's a transferable process. I think it's something we could. Consider when we review development. I think to a certain extent, you know, we have our development manual, which which is a great. Which sets kind of the expectations with respect to development and and considerations for safety. But absolutely, you know, I think that's, you know, it's obviously a great opportunity kind of at the onset. Of a, you know, building a community, trying to incorporate measures that are are proactive in in terms of of, you know. Drivers and pedestrian and cyclist safety. So yes, I I think that we can borrow elements of this process. As we consider development applications.
Thanks, Adam. Thanks, Adam. And thanks for the questions. I'm going to read the recommendation. That the council, the township of Centre Wellington endorses the Centre Wellington Speed Limit Policy and Technical Approach as outlined in Report. IS two thousand twenty one dash eighteen dated November twenty second, twenty twenty one. Can I have a mover for that, please? Councillor McCrae, second by councillor Kittriss, all in favor? And that carries. Thank you very much. I think it's you did really good work. Moving on to seven point four demolition control of one twenty Wellington Road seven in the former village of Alora. And for this report, we'll turn it over to our chief building official, our Randy. Welcome, Randy.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Linton and members of council. What I have before you this afternoon is a demolition. Control application for a one story bungalow at one twenty Wellington County Road seven, just. On the right hand side as you're coming into Alora. The the dwelling no longer meets the needs of the the owners. And they wish to. Remove the the house so that they can build a new house, in fact. That the one story house was built in nineteen fifty six. And it is not recorded in the township Centre Wellington Municipal Heritage Register, and it is not designated under part four of the Ontario Heritage Act. And I would be pleased to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Randy. Questions from council? Councillor McCrae?
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. Randy, so. The owners are planning to build a single or sorry, a single unit as opposed to multiple units on that site?
Ah, through you, Mayor Linton. That is correct. In fact. It's a newly or recently being sold. And it's it's the new homeowners that have purchased the property that would like to build. A a single family dwelling. That's not to say that, you know, depending. On the new homeowners, they they may end up having an accessory apartment on the property, but. As far as I'm aware, currently, they they like to replace a single family home with a single family home.
Okay, I just noticed it's a fairly large lot when you look at the aerial photo.
Ah, yeah, it's it's definitely got potential for accessory buildings and 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 other other structures on it, for sure.
Councillor Dun- Councillor Dunsmore?
Yeah, I have I have no questions.
Councillor Kittriss?
No question.
Councillor McQuain?
No questions.
Councillor Van Loon?
No questions.
Councillor Foster?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, I read the recommendation of the council, the township of Centre Wellington approves the issuance of a demolition permit to demolish the single detached dwelling located at one twenty Wellington Road in the former village of Laura. Can I have a mover for that, please? Councillor McCrae, second by councillor McQuain, all in favor? And that is carried. Thanks, Randy. Moving on to motions where notice has been given. We have a reconsideration of Middlebrook Place Bridge, and the notice was given for this on October eighteenth, twenty twenty one. So it was a decision made of council. And will require two thirds majority vote in order to pass. Just to make sure that councillors are aware of our procedures bylaw. And I will give councillor McQuain the first opportunity to speak to this, and then we'll go around the room. Again, we're talking about the reconsideration. Of Middlebrook Place Bridge. Over to you, councillor McQuain.
Before we start this, Kelly, Mayor. Nine point one is information item from Adam. On this very topic, would it not make more sense for him to review his information before I? Talk about the motion? I just just a question. It it seems like the information item isn't required if we. If we vote against the the motion to reconsider.
Yeah, this I understand your question completely, councillor McQuain. This was a difficult one. We actually should have. We did this a little bit differently, and we probably should have done it done it another way. In order for staff to do work on anything, we should have done a motion to reconsider. Before staff required to do a report, and we didn't make that happen. So in order for staff to be engaged and and provide their advice, we really do have to go through the process of council determining whether or not this is just. A decision we want to reconsider. So we really need to do a point one. Before we do nine point one to be consistent with the intent behind our procedures bylaw. So I think we'll move ahead on that, and if if that doesn't doesn't go ahead. Then, yeah, the nine point one information item is just an information item, and it it won't be looked at if we don't vote in favor of this reconsideration. Councillor Foster, do you have a point of order?
Just a mayor, just a quick question for clarity's sake. So then today's discussion, we're. We're voting on whether to reconsider it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, big, good distinction there. We're voting to reconsider an earlier decision of council. So councillor McQuain, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing ain't worth nothing, but it's free. I used to consider this lyric written by Chris Christoffersen as a truism until this bridge motion. Nothing still ain't worth nothing, but it costs seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's what the township of townships of Woolwich and Centre Wellington are suggesting that the taxpayers pay. To end up with nothing. Given that the seven twenty thousand is the starting position. Let's concentrate on the cultural, mental and physical well being, safety and historic benefits of maintaining a bridge. As well as considering all economic impacts, not just the capital cost. To justify spending an additional eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars over the next fifty years. The framework for the class EA process, as identified on the EA Act. Requires the social, cultural, economic, technical and natural environmental. Environmental components be considered. It would seem that the recommendation to remove this bridge was based primarily on the economic considerations. And even then only considered the capital cost. There was no consideration given to the positive economic impact of bicycle tourism. Prior to the pandemic, bicycle tourism was one of the fastest growing leisure activities in North America. The G two G experience estimates the pedestrian and bicycle tourism tripled during the pandemic. And as proof of that, it was almost impossible to buy a new bike in twenty twenty due to the high demand, and the demand continues. Many studies from across North America have shown that. Economic benefit of bicycle tourism, including studies from Quebec, Arkansas, Colorado, and one in the Outdoor Industry Association in the US. Over the thirty year or fifty year lifecycle of this bridge. We're we are considering it's likely that it would be relatively easy to identify eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Dollars of economic benefit. The Save the Middlebrook Bridge Group led by Steph Twohill and and. The Save the Middlebrook Bridge Group led by Steph Toohill and Mark Walker have over 200 individuals who have joined them in support of rehabilitating the bridge. Many of these 200-plus individuals represent much larger groups, such as the Director of Gualph Premier Road Gravel Cycling Club, the Speed River Cycling Club with over 200 members, and the Chair of the Gualph Trail Users Group Coalition, and the President of the Grand Valley Trail Association with over 250 members, and the Chair of the G2G Gualph Trailway, plus many others representing non-pavement cycling groups and hiking groups. Consider the fact that the bridge is part of the Grand River Trail system with the pinnacle section, which is one of the, one of the, the beginning section of the Grand River Trail from Bellwood ends at that bridge as a convenient and safe river crossing. And of course, many individuals who have simply enjoyed the Middlebrook Bridge for many years. I spoke to one individual a couple of days ago who grew up in Almyra. His parents used to take him and his siblings to the Middlebrook Bridge on a regular basis. It's where he learned to fish and they used to go just to enjoy the beautiful surroundings and have a picnic lunch. Now he and his wife do the same thing with their families. All of council members have received emails with similar stories. Removing the bridge is counterproductive to the goal of communities as a whole to promote active transportation in the battle against climate change. And investing in bicycle and pedestrian facilities creates opportunities for people to exercise, helping to reduce the risk for developing costly chronic conditions such as diabetes and cardiovascular disease. It's difficult to put a dollar benefit to that, but we know that it's substantial. There's an online tool called Strava Head Heat Maps that records traffic volumes for active transportation participants. Individuals can't access specific data from Strava, but it is free for, it is free to municipalities. Individuals can see high, high see a view of the heat maps. And for the last 12 months, there was a very high usage of the Middlebrook Bridge while it was still open. And then a very low, comparatively low usage of the Eighth Line Bridge for the remainder of the year, even though that was a longer period. It would appear that cyclists prefer not to end up as hood decorations and gravel trucks on the Eighth Line. The heritage value of the bridge should also be considered as part of the environmental considerations. Historicbridges.org lists this bridge as historically significant. And quote, "Given that pin-connected trust bridges are exceedingly rare in Ontario and pin-connected Camelback Parker Trust bridges even more so, this is a devastating loss to Ontario's cultural heritage." The GRCA watershed bridge inventory lists this Camelback Pratt through Trust Bridge, which apparently is called the Chalmers Bridge, refers to it as a rare, unique or early example of a style representing a high degree of technical or scientific achievement. It is classified as significant and in the same group as the Winterborne Bridge, or sometimes called the Peel Street Bridge, that was recently approved for rehabilitation as a pedestrian bridge. There are potential funding sources to help rehabilitate this bridge, including the National Active Transportation Strategy and Fund, Infrastructure Canada, Investing in Canada, Infrastructure and the Community Building Fund, Capital Stream. And users are reached out willing to support fundraising. I received a photo this morning of the grand opening of the Gosling Bridge in Gualph, built this summer by several trail user groups spearheaded by the Gualph Hiking Trail Club after fundraising and grant writing. Of course, it's a much smaller project, but it's an indicator of the alternate funding available and the willingness of trail enthusiasts to contribute. The Middlebrook Bridge is too important to make the decision to destroy it solely based on capital cost. The short-term capital costs are minimal and over the lifecycle, the Centre Wellington share of the cost would be about 0.1% of the 2.8 million bridge fund. That could be set aside annually in a reserve for future capital costs. Or a small investment each year from economic development, heritage or parks and rec. All of these departments benefit from the economic, cultural, social and heritage value of this bridge and could contribute to a reserve fund for future maintenance. I should point out at this point that I'm basing my numbers based upon the the chart provided by the original, if I can find it. Financial projections of the Trust Bridge presented at Woolwich Township in which they said that the removal cost was 700K, that's gone up to 720. The rehabilitation cost was 900K at the same, for the same year. That's probably gone off a little bit too, but that's not included in the report from Adam. And then over the lifespan, it comes out to 1.6 million. So it's, that's $880,000 different over a 50-year lifespan. And that's not a very huge investment for such an important bridge. Our strategic plan states that we will promote tourism, continue to identify and provide trails, bike lanes and walkways within and between neighborhoods and communities, and will support the heritage of our community. Saving and rehabilitating the Middlebrook Chalmers Bridge as a pedestrian bridge meets all of these objectives. And the removal cost of $720,000 and provides nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McQuain. On to the rest of the council. Council Foster?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilor McQuain, for a very excellent report. And I too wish to underline the fact that doing nothing, in this case, costs about 700 or 720,000 dollars. That's the cost to remove the bridge. So we lay out that money, we remove the bridge and we end up with nothing. And if we use the figures from that same report, then we could spend just a few dollars more, 900,000, and end up rehabilitating the bridge. And given that those numbers are a bit older, perhaps both numbers are higher, but the differential is going to be very similar, I would think. So for all of the reasons mentioned by Council McQuain, the Gualph to Godrich rail trail, the cycling tourism. The impact of all of that on our community is very, very positive. It's a unique bridge as well. And we can preserve some of our cultural heritage by maintaining this bridge. There's a wide variety of users who have all spoken up about this bridge. The public wants to see us. There's great interest by the public in keeping this bridge. So cost-wise, we can do all of those things for a very, very low marginal cost compared to the cost to remove it. And so for all of the above reasons so well articulated by my colleague, Council McQuain, I'd like to make a motion that we reconsider the decision and that we try to maintain this bridge.
Yeah, that's what we're doing right now, Council Foster. Council Van Luin?
Thanks, Mayor. First, I want to say that by removing the bridge, we are achieving one thing, and that is we're removing a liability. We have a liability sitting there that we have to get rid of or make a decision of some sort. One thing, it's a very, very expensive removal. And I think that the difficulty I have is we're spending a lot of money on a removal, but we're going to spend a ton of money if we actually go forward to rehabilitating this bridge at the 1.6 million to 1.9 million. My biggest concern is, or the difficulty I have fathoming is, how can it really be that expensive to bring in, narrow the lane in in order for us to have this as a pedestrian walking bridge, bicycle or walking? So realistically, I can really appreciate the information item, but there's no way for us to engage into, you know, what is the design? Why will it be 1.6 million? How can we talk about different ideas for the bridge, going, opportunities for groups to tender out? We can't do any of this unless we do reconsider. That being said, once we reconsider, if the price comes back at the 1.6 million dollars, I would have no desire to spend that on trying to rebuild. So there's only one reason and one way possible that I would reconsider this is so that we can brainstorm and look at and have a little more input into what would it cost to make this a pedestrian bridge? Because I don't, I think that if it's there and we can do it reasonable, then okay. But otherwise, we would have to let this bridge go. Thanks.
Council Dunstmore? No, sorry, Council Kittris? Oh, that's right, Council Dunstmore.
Okay, I was looking for him too. Am I allowed to ask staff questions on this, or do I have to make my own assumptions on this?
You have to make your own assumptions on this.
So this was a joint decision made by two councils. And the numbers that we got were 1.6 to 1.9. And I was assuming that those numbers were our share. So the other council, Woolwich Council, hasn't addressed this and won't address this. So if we decide to keep this bridge and rehabilitated, I would suspect we'd have to double these numbers because they're not going to contribute their share. They would be foolish to do that. If we're the ones who want to revisit this and and save the bridge instead of following through in the original plan that both councils agreed to and came up with, then we'll be responsible for all the costs. And I think it would be considerably more than what we're looking at today. And so I wouldn't support revisiting it.
Council McCray?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I have a number of questions, concerns. Reviewing the options and considering other infrastructure needs and expenses, it is impractical and too costly to consider rehabilitating the existing bridge, especially if Woolwich isn't footing half of the cost. I guess one of the questions I have regarding the cost for removal of the bridge, does that include the pier and abutments or just the metal structure, infrastructure itself? One of the questions I have is, could we save the pier and abutments for maybe future use? Or we could spend it with a smaller pedestrian bridge similar to, similar in size to, say, the Bissell Park Bridge? Council McQuain suggested previously using Parks and Rec funding to fund this project. Based on these costs, we would significantly delay funding other active transportation initiatives within our urban area where there is more urgency to establish needed infrastructure. What I've heard to date from the public is mostly people outside of the community who asking us to save the bridge. Should funding for this project come ahead of the needs of our residents? I mean, these are some of the questions I have about reopening this.
Yeah, I'm just going to make a couple of comments for myself. So for me, you know, Council Foster talked about a few dollars more. $900,000 for our township is not a few dollars more. So I'm curious about, curious about that. For the past seven years, we've had four or three votes on all of our budgets. And it's really tough. We can barely get enough support during our budgets to rebuild all our high priority bridges that have been established based on our asset management plan and our, and our bridge condition study. And so now we have same councillors asking to put more money into a bridge that falls outside our priority list of bridges to be rebuilt. You know, this, this is one of those things that it's, I don't think this is in the best interest of our municipality. And like I said initially, $900,000 is a significant amount of money. And I don't think, I think we made the right decision the first time when we went through this as a council. So I won't be in favor of a reconsideration. Okay, so we've gone through all accounts. I'm going to give an opportunity for Council McQuain to speak one more time.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that a couple of things. My understanding is the total cost of the bridge is 1.6 million, not our share of the total, not our share of the total cost of the bridge. And so we're not talking the numbers that I, I can't remember who it was, Neil maybe that said that it was doubled. It's not. Number one, but number two is our, our cost in 2022 potentially, or whenever they get around doing the bridge, is a couple hundred thousand dollars more than the cost to remove the bridge. So the, the rest of the cost, the other 700,000, 600,000 dollars after that is spread over 30 years or 50 years. It's not all upfront. So it's talking about 1.6 million dollars is a, is a lifespan cost. And unfortunately, that's all we were provided in the report that was attached to this today. And I would love to see the same numbers from, from Adam that I saw from from Woolwich, but we're, we got the numbers that we've got. And the fact is, the numbers are over for a 50-year lifespan of the bridge. Not, they're, they're not for this year. There's not 1.6 million dollars now. It's 900,000 dollars now for rehabilitation and 700,000 dollars to tear it down. So for a couple hundred thousand dollars, which is a pretty small number, for all of the benefits that it brings to us, is to me, it's all, it's a no-brainer. And so I, you know, throwing the, throwing the lifespan cost out as a, as a reason not to, or not to rehabilitate this bridge is just misdirection, really. It's not, it's not a reality. It's and as I say, I mean, it doesn't take very much for, for 600,000 dollars split in half over 30 or 50 years of, of, before we spend it all. It doesn't take very much set aside every year in a, in a reserve to pay for that. It's not, it's not a big number. It's, as I said, it's about 0.1% of our 2.8 million dollar bridge bridge budget that, that our taxpayers are paying 15% for. So I, I don't understand really why the numbers are such a scary thing for anyone. They're, they're very reasonable numbers with a whole lot of benefits. And, and if you think that cycling and trails are not beneficial to the community, then great, vote against it. If you do think that they're beneficial to the community, then this is a very inexpensive way to, to include a very valuable piece of our biking infrastructure.
Any last comments from council before I call this? Council Van Luin?
Thanks, Mayor. I wanted to be very, very clear that I am in favor of reconsidering this bridge, but I am not in favor of spending 1.6 million on creating a walking bridge in Middlebrook, over the Middlebrook area. So I want to be clear that, that for the reconsideration, it is when we get an opportunity to re-brainstorm, re-look at something and actually have some real input again, instead of council just discussing. So whatever the direction goes, reconsideration does not mean approval to automatically start rehabilitating this bridge for a walking bridge. It's to reconsider. So that's, that's where, how I'm looking at this anyway. Thanks.
Council Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me clarify my remarks so they're well understood. We have a spot cost of removal at 700,000. We have the immediate cost of rehabilitation at 900,000. 200 is a few dollars more than 700, and we end up with a rehabilitated historic bridge. That is what I was referring to as a few dollars more. Many bridges are 3 million, 4 million, 5 million dollars. Here, we're going to have to pay 700 and end up with nothing. Or we can pay 900 immediately and end up with a rehabilitated bridge that is historic, that is well-loved, that is well-used by cyclists, hikers. There's benefits to maintaining this heritage bridge. It's a very unique bridge. So yes, when you look at 700,000 to remove it or 900,000 to keep it, that's just a few dollars more, Mayor. And that's why I think we should keep it. And I'm fully in favor of doing so. At the very least, we need to have a long, hard look and, and and flesh out some of these matters before we make the decision to demolish it.
Well, I think looking, moving ahead to reconsider it is the only way we're going to get accurate numbers because there's so many numbers getting thrown out here that I don't know where they're coming from. Because they're not coming from the report that's in 9.1. That's Because they're not coming from the report that's in nine point one, that's for sure. Counselor McCray?
Thank you, Marilyn. I echo Counselor Van Lewin's approach. If I was to vote in favor of reconsidering this, this is just to get more information, answers to some of the questions, things like understanding, if we're talking about replacing the pedestrian bridge, do those costs that have been quoted include the actual removal of the bridge or is removal on top of that? So it'd be to explore other ideas of what we could do, looking down the road of possibly having some sort of a bridge crossing. So that would be my only interest in reconsidering this is to understand a bit more of what we might be able to do.
Counselor Dunsborough?
No, our staff would never present us with numbers that another council is considering. So these numbers that they're bringing to us are our share of the cost. And if Woolwich doesn't vote the same way to reconsider, we're gonna end up getting hung with all of the cost for this, and that's my biggest concern. So these are our costs. You can double them if Woolwich doesn't play ball.
Anything new before I call a vote on this, Counselor Foster?
We had no qualms about borrowing twenty-seven million dollars to build a garage that, that, as I well articulated, that I don't think we need. And here we have a chance to maintain a beautiful historic bridge for nine hundred thousand. It's coming right out of the Woolwich report. To answer your question, Kelly, that's where I got the number. Here we have the chance to maintain a bridge for nine hundred thousand or get rid of it for seven hundred. That's, that, as Counselor McElwain said, is a no-brainer. We can preserve our history, provide our cyclists and pedestrians and hikers with a beautiful bridge, maintain a piece of our history, and why would we not want to do that? At the very least, let's reconsider it and, and do a deep dive and confirm these amounts. I think we should reconsider it.
Okay, thanks for clarifying where that number was coming from, because I would assume that you use the updated numbers that our staff provided in today's report. Okay, well, if I can get a second here for this motion to reconsider. Counselor Foster, all in favor of reconsidering? Opposed? And that gets the two-thirds majority vote to reconsider. And thank you, and we'll move on to the item then. So the information item that we have is the township of Woolwich Bridge that we've just been talking about. And we have a report from our manager of engineering, Adam. Welcome, Adam.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Linton. Through you to members of council, I think the report speaks for itself. So happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Okay, thanks, Adam. And questions from council, starting with Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Adam, it's very important that we have a clear picture here. And let's compare, we, we have a very simple numeric that we need some clarity on. What is the cost of removing the bridge? And what is the cost of rehabilitating it in the current, at the current time? Not life cycle cost, the cost to remove, the cost to rehabilitate.
Adam?
Yeah, thanks, Counselor Foster. Through you, Mary Linton. So just to clarify, we did present the cost as life cycle costs. The reason why we did that is, you know, typically when we do these municipal class EA studies, that's the way the costs are presented. And it's a tool that is used to, to provide more of an apples-to-apples comparison. When we look at, you know, the life cycle of, of, of infrastructure, they have different capital and maintenance investment schedules. And so we typically present them as life cycle costs to, again, kind of bring it all back from the, the, kind of the end of life to current present value and, and present it that way. So those costs are presented as life cycle costs for that reason. So as outlined in the report, the, the, so this is information from the municipal class EA study that was done by Woolwich and their consultants in twenty twenty. The life cycle cost to remove the bridge without replacement at that time was estimated at five hundred and fifty thousand. And the life cycle cost to rehabilitate the bridge was one point six million. The life cycle cost to replace the bridge for pedestrian use was one point two one million. So since that time, we've been working with Woolwiches through the capital budget process to update the cost of removal, which was identified, as you know, as the preferred option. And we've since updated that cost to seven hundred and twenty thousand for the removal of the bridge. And the way we've budgeted that in our current budget is that cost is shared between us and Woolwich. So we have in year twenty twenty-eight, I believe, in the proposed twenty twenty-two budget, we've got three hundred and sixty thousand for the township's share of removing the bridge in twenty twenty-eight. So just to provide some clarity, those are life cycle costs that are presented in the report.
Okay, so just to be crystal clear, Adam, because I don't want to have to go through these numbers a million times again. So the cost to Center Wellington to remove the bridge is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And now if we moved ahead to do rehabilitate the bridge for pedestrian cycle use, what would be the cost to Center Wellington?
Yeah, thank you, Mary Linton. So my understanding, and, and I guess we, we haven't confirmed this, but kind of thinking it through, you know, given that Woolwich, again, our understanding at a staff level is that they're not considering at this time revisiting the preferred option. We, we might find ourselves in a situation, the township here, where if we're not supporting that preferred alternative of removing the bridge without replacement, we might be covering a hundred percent of the cost of another solution. So if we, it's kind of following that logic. If we were to, so then if we were to rehabilitate the bridge, the life cycle cost, again, life cycle cost would be one point six million, I would assume, to the township. And the cost to replace with a bridge for pedestrian use will be one point two one million to the township.
So the difference between the two is let's just work that out for a minute, because I want to make sure we're talking about the right numbers here. The difference between, once we remove it, and then we rehabilitated, the, the cost to us to do both those actions would be what?
Okay, so you got me going with, on, with some math here quickly. But it looks like on the high end, it would be the difference in cost. So this is again comparing. So the, so the rehabilitation option where the life cycle cost is one point six million, assuming the township would be paying for all of that cost versus the three hundred and sixty K where the township would be splitting the cost of removal with Woolwich, the difference there is one point two four million. And if we were to go to the replace with a pedestrian bridge option, that would be a difference of eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. Okay, that helps. So eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be the cost to Center Wellington to move ahead to retain this bridge for pedestrian vehicular use. We all, we're all clear with that number? Well, it seems like we aren't. Counselor Foster?
Marilyn, it, it makes no sense to use life cycle cost. You, you have to, you're not comparing an apple with an apple if you use life cycle cost. You've got to look at the total of twenty twenty-two cost, and we don't know whether Woolwich will share the cost or not. We haven't even asked them. So those arguments are not accurate financially, because we've never asked them. Will they, you know, there's a benefit to Woolwich to keeping the bridge as well. So you, you, the number, the data are cooked if, if you do it like that. You, you can't, you can't combine the numbers. You're comparing an apple with an orange if you do it this way.
Counselor Van Lewin?
Thanks, Mayor. My recommendation would be that that we, now that we're willing to reconsider, that we actually bring forward to the bike community or the cycling group, that they go out to tender to engineers, to any type of ideas, and come back with such ideas of how they could rehabilitate the bridge in a safe and appropriate way that matches and meets the standard of the township. So it would have to be an engineered idea. But we put the ball in their court. When they do come back with such, such regulations, which our staff could provide, then we would actually then look at their costing and be able to assess what they would look at. Right now, if we, as the township have said, this is what we would be doing, and this is the cost, let's put the, the the ball back in their court. There could be some really good ideas, and if it doesn't come back with any good ideas and cost savings, then I think that we have our answer, and we, and we move forward with removal of the bridge at the basis of the cost. But otherwise, let's give opportunity for, for other ideas. And a cycling group who has the most skin in the game are gonna come up with the, the greatest, but the most energy into it, and they may just come back with some incredible information for us as council to consider. There, our neighboring municipality, I'm pretty sure if they saw that and it came in their similar pricing or close, then they probably would be more than willing to jump on board. But I can't see why the cycling community wouldn't be willing to do some legwork and as long as they got the numbers they needed. There, there's, there's a way. So that's my recommendation. Put it at cycling community, and we give them some assistance.
Counselor McElwain?
Thanks, Mayor. I, I think that the first step should be for to, to approach, to approach Woolwich again and ask them if they're, given that we're willing to reconsider, I mean, and are they willing to reconsider as well? Because if they say no, then it's a different ballpark, obviously, and it's, it would be very unfortunate. But I mean, the numbers are really really not that great over the lifespan of the, of the bridge. And for, for twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three, or whenever this bridge is gonna be either demolished or rehabilitated, we're, we're only talking a couple hundred thousand dollars split between two communities. So it, you know, it's, it's not a big number. And then over the long term, the lifespan, it's eight hundred thousand dollars split over two communities. It's not a big number over thirty or fifty years, whatever the number, however many years it is to, to actually do the rehabilitation. I think it was over thirty years is from the original MCA. So thirty years of, of setting aside a few dollars a year into a, into a reserve, it's, it's certainly not costing the community anywhere near what it would cost to build a new biking facility or any other kind of recreational facility. So it's, it's not a big deal.
Counselor Dunsborough?
Yeah, so there's a lot of balls in the air right now. So I'd like some clarification, and perhaps I have to ask the clerk for that because we just made a, asked a motion to reconsider it. Now we have an information item that we're looking at. We're not voting on one of these options today, right? Because we, this is an information item, and we're voting to reconsider. Are we reconsidering right now? Or can we defer this back to staff and contact Woolwich? Because I have real grave concerns about us making a decision now to move forward in a direction. They'd be fools if we made a decision to go with one of these options without them, because this is a shared asset. And, and they could get away with not paying for anything if, if we decide to go with it. So are we voting on this now, Carrie, or are we gonna bring this up at another meeting?
Yeah, so we, the recommendation does read that we're receiving this for information. The staff aren't prepared to do anything until they get direction back from council. So but this, again, this report had to be written in such a way because we didn't, the staff didn't know if we were gonna be able to reconsider it. So obviously, they're not gonna put forward a recommendation to do this or do that. So we're receiving this report for information. If there's direction that comes from council to do anything as a result, well, then that'll have to be a separate motion that comes from council. Counselor, Counselor McCray?
Now, thank you, Marilyn. I have several questions. Does replacement of the bridge include the bridge's removal? Is that something you can help me with, Adam?
Yes, yeah, thanks, Counselor McCray. Through you, Mary Linton. My understanding is that it does. I think that the life cycle costs included in the EA did factor in all of the costs, so they would have assumed that, yes, that the bridge was going to be replaced on the, the replace bridge for pedestrian use option. I do believe that, that, that life cycle costing includes the cost of removal.
A second question, if I may, Adam. Does the removal cost include the pier and abutments, or are they gonna be left where they are?
Yeah, thanks, Counselor McCray. That I'm not sure of. I think we would have to look into that in the municipal class EA study in terms of what was assumed and, and report back.
If I may ask another question?
Point of order, Mayor. Point of order, Counselor McCray, and there?
What's your point of order, Counselor Foster?
This, this is an information item. We have to vote on whether to receive it or not receive it. I appreciate you and your questions, however. We've already passed that we're gonna reconsider it, and now we're looking at item nine, which is to receive this for information or not. And your questions are well asked, Counselor McCray, but they should occur when we actually go back and revisit the decision. Am I missing something procedurally here? We're, we're dealing with item nine, which is an information item.
No, these are, these are, well, these questions are well within what we're talking about right now. If, if we're gonna receive it for information, we have to understand the information. So continue, Counselor McCray.
Thank you, Marilyn. My other question is, are the pier and abutments in good shape to allow a future pedestrian bridge? So I guess one of the things I'm trying to understand is, are the costs more related to replacing the metal infrastructure on top of the pier and the abutments, or are we also having to consider significant work in the abutments and pier?
Yeah, thanks, Counselor McCray. So I'm not sure about that. Unless Adam Dickerson has anything to add there, that might be another one. We might have to go back into the municipal class EA report and into our most recent bridge condition data surveys to, to try and find that information for you.
Okay, thank you, because what I'm thinking of is, if we end up going forward with removing the bridge, if the pier and the abutments can remain in place, then at maybe some future date, if these special interest groups are interested in fundraising and raising money to put another crossing over the river, we at least have the pier and the abutments in place that they could use. So I guess what I'm looking at is, one of the things to reconsider is if we are still going with removal based with, on what Woolwich wants, can we ensure that the pier and the abutments remain in place for possible future use?
Okay, so I think we're, we have a lot of unanswered questions here, and it's coming back down to, we don't really know about what Woolwich wants to do. Their council has made no indication that they're willing to reconsider. So I would, I would say if, if council's okay with it, for our staff to be, be directed to contact the Woolwich staff and to get a, get their thoughts on, on what they're planning on doing and get a little bit more detail on that to bring it back to this council. Because we don't, there's so many unanswered questions here, and we're, we're, we're throwing numbers out there. You know, making an assumption that they're not gonna come to the table, or they are gonna come to the table for a piece of it and not another piece of it. I think it makes sense for us to provide direction to staff to go back to Woolwich and get their feedback and bring that back to this council. Because otherwise, we're not sure what we're, we're doing. We're not sure what we're getting into. We're not sure what the cost is. And there's so many unknowns. It, it would be irresponsible, I think, to make a decision on this today without getting more information from Woolwich and what that means from a costing to Center Wellington. Because that's bottom line, that's what, what's necessary for us. Is anybody, anybody with me on, on that being the next step that makes sense? Can, we have anybody that wants to put a motion forward to refer this to staff with that kind of direction, Counselor Dunsborough?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to refer this issue back to staff and ask them to communicate with Woolwich to see if they're willing to reconsider the original decision and then bring us back the costs associated with that. If Woolwich says no, then all the costs- and then bring us back the costs associated with that. If Woolwich says no, then all the costs are ours, and we need to know what we're looking at.
Can we get a second here for that motion? Councilor Ma- Councilor McElwain, are you seconding that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Um, any discussion, uh, from council on that? Let's have some new discussion, please. Councilor Foster?
I'd like to propose a friendly amendment, since my question is unanswered. Uh, Neil, and, and to be very, very specific, I'd like to know that the 2022 cost of removal and the 22, 22 cost of rehabilitation in total. And whether it's, uh, shared by both of us, or I'd like two numbers, please. The cost to rehabilitate and the cost to remove. And whether it's shared or, or, or not shared is a secondary matter. So as long as we get an exact, accurate annual, uh, uh, a snapshot number of the 2022 cost that doesn't include life cycle cost, that's the kind of number we need to make an intelligent decision. Can we get that number?
Okay, so we're talking about a friendly amendment. So remind council that a friendly, friendly amendment is, uh, amendment to a motion under debate that is perceived by all members as an enhancement to the original motion and often only as a clarification of intent and without the requirement for an amending motion to be made. So I, I don't think that that's a friendly amendment. That's going significantly beyond what, uh, Council Dunsborough moved and Council McElwain seconded. Um, so we're gonna have to deal with the original motion that we have on the floor, um, and see where that goes, and, and then that would be a brand-new motion. Councilor Van Lewin?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, one of the difficulties with the language of reconsideration, and, and I, I think that this is where I struggled with it originally, is reconsideration makes it sound like, um, we're going to, uh, um, stop and pivot immediately, as in, we were gonna demolish, and now we're gonna stop, pivot and rebuild. So I would like some wording in, when we go back to Woolwich, to say like, are they willing to consider pause and reconsideration for different, for, um, alternate ideas, per se, but not per se a total reconsideration? Because we, we haven't decided to actually do anything at this point. So I want to make sure that Woolwich doesn't, doesn't, um, assume that we have now suddenly decided to, um, pivot at 180, but that they are recognizing that Center Wellington Council has paused for reconsideration um, and may still move forward with, with the decision. Something about the language that, that needs to be very clear to them.
So I think what Councilor Van Lewin is asking for in providing direction to staff, that they have their very holistic approach when they talk to Woolwich, Woolwich staff, um, that they get Woolwich's in, intent behind this bridge. F and, and, you know, if their council has any, this, this, um, any, um, opportunity or any kind of desire to reconsider it, we need to know. If there is none at all, uh, then we have our answer, and then we go back to this table, um, with, with clearer numbers. So I think, uh, staff, I, I don't think it has to be built into the motion, Councilor Van Lewin. I think that, that staff understand that they're going and asking some holistic questions about Woolwich's intent and where that leaves us. So I think, I think we're good with that motion. Um, uh, our staff have heard this discussion here, so I know, I think they know the questions that they're gonna be asking. Um, and so I think that, that we'll get the answers that we need. Councilor McCray?
Thank you, Marilyn Lynn. Uh, one thing I would ask when, if possible, when staff go back to Woolwich, is to ask, what does removal of the bridge include? What is happening with the abutment and the piers? That's, I think, an important thing to know.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table for staff to go and consult with Woolwich, uh, moved by Council Dunsborough, seconded by Council McCray, all in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. I think our staff have that direction, so that's good. Um, thanks for that discussion. Thanks, uh, Adam, uh, for bringing that to the table and doing that, that, uh, report. Uh, moving on to 9.2, Tender Award Committee Report from July to October. Um, and I will pass it over to our Managing Director of Corporate Services Treasurer, if he has anything to add to his report. Oh, yes, Council Ketchis is back. Okay. Dan?
Uh, thank you, Marilyn Lynn. Nothing really to add to my report. Um, this basically outlines the, uh, meeting results of the Tender Award Committee from, uh, July to October of this year.
Okay, thanks, uh, very much, Dan. Again, these are, this is just an information item. We also have minutes from the Heritage Center, Wynton, minutes from Community Services Advisory Committee, minutes from the Healthy Growth Advisory Committee, and the tracking list. Is there any items on those information items that council has any questions or comments on? Okay, uh, last item on our agenda is a motion to adjourn. You ca, you came back just in time to move the motion, Council Ketchis. Moved by Council Ketchis, seconded by Council Van Lewin, all in favor? Council Foster, I can't see you there. Are you in favor of adjourning, or are you already gone? Okay, so Council Foster left the meeting at 4:32. Thanks and have a great rest tonight.